Yeah.
Yes, I see you. Right. And first thing that's going on. Okay, okay.
Oh, that's what it was. I didn't have my microphone on. Welcome back from lunch. The first I'm going to go ahead and open it up with public comment for any items that were not on the agenda. If there's anyone on Zoom or anyone in the chambers. All right. Not seeing any. We'll go ahead and close that portion. Move on to our next budget item, which is District Attorney Susan Cronus.
Good afternoon. Well, first of all, I want to start off by saying a big thank you to the board and the county administration for the increased pay rates, especially for our victim witness office and our advocates. And it has made a big difference in morale and retention. And I know it will make a big difference in retention, for sure. So, saying that, I'll just start with Victim Witness Unit 1, I'm sorry, 2113. So, we were able to hire a new advocate to fill an open position that had been vacant for months. And every year we face, we still would, will be facing the challenge with the federal funding that goes through the federal government to the state government in terms of our VOKA funds and our victim witness funds. So, the amount has been decreasing every year. And we don't know what we're going to get to from the state this year. We'll know more, obviously, when the state officially passes its budget. But we struggle with this issue every year. And I'm hoping that we won't have to worry about the grant funds for victim witness. But if we do run into that situation, I will advise the board and probably be making a request for funds to keep our victim witness office open, but hopefully that won't come to be. Now, in the terms of the DA's office, in the budget, we did give up a position for, one position for a deputy district attorney and the support staff analyst. And these positions that will, that we gave up, especially, well, we have one more that we can fill for deputy DAs. That we recently hired a new deputy. We also have an intern as well, and that's helping, but that's just a summer intern. But every, you know, all of our attorneys are very, very busy. Myself and my chief, we're in court all the time. I handle juvenile cases, I handle asset forfeiture. And my chief, he handles, he has several murder cases that he's handling because of the volume of cases. We are not able to just do administrative things that we do. We have to take cases as well. So, my chief, Rich Watson, he has several pending murder cases. And we do have a large volume of murder cases, including two active fentanyl homicides cases that we're prosecuting. And there are some cold cases that we are doing additional investigation on. And hopefully, that will lead to charging those. Right now, there's two cold cases that we're working on actively. In terms of the office as well, we are, this year, beginning January 1st, we implemented the racial blind charging law. And we did it on the day that they said we were supposed to start. And I'm very proud of that because there's other DA's offices in the bigger counties that haven't started yet or were delayed in starting. So, what that act requires is that we have the name and race and other identifying racial data in our reports, law enforcement reports, taken out before it's reviewed by the attorney to charge. Once a decision is made, then, then we look at, the attorney would look at the full report and decide whether or not they're still going to charge it, or there's a different decision made. So, we're keeping track of those. There are some exceptions, but we are doing that. And it obviously takes more time to review cases. And it takes more, it takes staff time to redact. We use a company right now that redacts it, but it also takes additional staff time to prepare the two separate reports. When we implement our new case management system, hopefully, we're on our way right now to get that going, thanks to the board, board's approval of that. And that management system will have that racial, racial blind charging component on that system. And, and then our last unit is asset forfeiture, which is basically, we're, I'm actively handling those cases when we receive, we receive money from drug and mostly drug cases where the person is charged with a drug offense, possession for sale. And if we show that that money that they have with them was proceeds for sales, from sales, then we can forfeit it. But it does require, usually, it requires a conviction or an agreement or a stipulation to forfeit that money. So, I would answer any questions.
Supervisor Sabate?
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments regarding VOKA and have concerns because your job of ensuring that justice is served requires victims to feel comfortable and safe to approach the witness stand or just even being able to talk to you privately and your staff. I see here that you have dropped it to a 3.8. I'm going to guess it's 0.8 because you have somebody who's already kind of accepted the idea of being a 0.8. So, we're probably at 2.8 currently, as far as what you have, and you have one remaining. I don't know how to do it, but I just, I feel like there needs to be some better support there. Or else, in my opinion, we, we tend to lose the cases that we need to try and work with our victims to get the testimony or the evidence required to prosecute in the appropriate way. So, I would love to figure out what we can do, whether to make that an even four or something else because it just, I, I know that Chair Crandall and I had what I thought was a very good conversation with your team a while back. We've been paying attention to VOKA and it's been coming along, but every time, it's kind of like a carrot that could potentially just disappear. And it's one of those things that's always on the chopping block that they talk about. And so, again, I don't know exactly what I'm asking for, but I know that I, I feel in my heart of hearts that this needs a little bit better support than what it's currently getting. And I'd love to see what can be done to help increase this budget by at least 50 to 100 grand or something like that. So, I don't know how else to put it.
Well, we, we recently hired a new advocate. And we plan on having, hopefully, another advocate, currently extra help, become an advocate in the next few, few months, five to six months, maybe. And that will help tremendously as well because she knows how the offices run. But, yeah, I mean, I think that just the increased pay is very helpful and will be helpful in recruiting as well.
Any other questions? I'll open it up to the public. Bring it back to the board. And thank you Supervisor Sabate for bringing that up. I do, I do agree with you about victim witness. I know it's very tough retaining people and whatnot, so. But very needed department. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, without further ado, move to approve as proposed Budget Unit 2010, 21, 2110, 2113, and 2116. Just those three.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next is our county library, and our Director Christopher Veach is coming up.
Hello. Thank you, Board. Christopher Veach, County Librarian. So, I just want to thank the Board for considering this recommended budget and for the Admin Office for their work in putting this together. My two units are 602-2 and 602-3, and they support the operations of the library to promote reading, literacy, and lifelong learning in Lake County. The main library fund is 125, Unit 602-2. It's primarily funded with a dedicated property tax approved by the voters in 1974. And property taxes make up the majority of all revenue. But there are also various grants that fund specific programs, as well as a contribution from the general fund for staff positions and to partially cover county overhead. My budget unit also includes 602-3, Fund 71. Historically, this was funded almost entirely by community donations and helped support our library collection and events. However, right now, it also contains grant funds for our capital projects, which is the majority of the expenditures seen in this unit for this upcoming year. But for the community donations, the library will continue to partner with our local nonprofits, the Friends of the Lake Library and the Lake County Literacy Coalition, who are the main source of donations for the library. So, the budget supports our library collection, which currently has 127,375 physical items and provides access to over 1 million digital resources. And these resources need constant renewal to remain relevant to the public. We also host events for children and adults. For instance, we have our monthly Kid Craft Events. They're expended out of Fund 071 and funded by community donations, as are most of our programs, such as Storytime and our other clubs. We also provide internet access through our 31 public computers, free Wi-Fi, and checking out our internet hotspots to the public. And we improve literacy in our community through our adult, family, and now ESL literacy programs, which continue to be funded by a grant from the state with a match from the library. Our budget objectives in the upcoming year are to continue to maintain our library collections. We want to continue to provide the digital resources we are now, as well as continue improvements for our print collection. As you've probably heard me say in the past, we are striving for our print collection to have 25% of titles have a publishing date within the last five years. We have met this objective at our smaller branches. And overall, our rate is 22.3% publishing date within the last five years across our libraries for our print collections. This year, we have already applied Form 1 for the budget year we're in, a grant to present a Lunch at the Library program at the Redbud Library, which is funded by a grant from the State Library. And this program provides programming at the library during the summer, as well as free meals to, to kids, and funds to interns to help present the program. We will apply for this again in summer 2026, and that is funded through state funds. We are also close to launching a new online catalog, which we will come to fruition in this next budget year. It's how many residents interact with the library and has all of our titles, digital and in print. And after the online catalog launches, we'll be working on a mobile library app, ensuring everyone has a quality experience of requesting and using print and digital resources at the library. And we're also continuing our outreach efforts to reach people beyond the walls of our library, such as our bookmobile, regularly visiting communities around the lake, and participating in community events. The, the main grant we're, we're working on right now is the Building Forward Library Infrastructure Grant Program, which is a multi-year grant from the State Library. And that, that's the one that's reflected in Budget Unit 602-3. There are capital improvements at all of our library branches, focusing on safety, as required by the grant. And the biggest addition will be solar backup generation at our three largest branches. And work on this grant is planned to be completed in this upcoming budget year. And that work is mainly being done by public services. As the library will do our best to remain open to the public, but they probably will, will require temporary closure of either the branch or parking lots at some of our branches. I wanted to mention the position allocation. The only change to our position allocation is the removal of a vacant, unfunded branch library coordinator position that the library didn't plan to fill in the near future. So, that, that reflection isn't, is in the position allocation already. And then I was also, I believe, asked to talk about resilient centers at the library. Not reflected in the budget, our fund is to operate as resilient centers for temperature events, like heating and cooling centers. Beyond the library's normal operating hours, I did, did create an estimate on how much this could cost. And my estimate, estimate for the next year would be it could cost up to $11,300. This would be to operate one or more library branches when they're normally closed on Sunday or Monday or in the evening hours. And the primary cost is overtime for staff, with up to 30 additional hours being estimated based on past climate data. And I didn't budget for any additional services beyond opening the library in this estimate. So, that concludes my overview of the library budget, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Sabate?
Just some quick questions, and thank you for that summary. Operating transfers in, I take it that's cannabis dollars coming in? As we were talking about earlier, the education fund, is that correct?
It's not solely cannabis dollars, but that is part of, that is the major part of it.
Right, right. Then I'm looking and I'm hopeful, because I was thinking about your solar panel projects. I'm hopeful that you, your utilities will start looking a little bit better once that's complete. And maybe that will help free up some money for some other things that you can use those funds for. My last question is special departmental supplies and services. What exactly, sorry, professional and specialized services, administrative services, seems to have almost doubled from our actual of 2324 to now? And just wondering what that specifically is?
To answer your questions about utilities, that is the hope, but that isn't reflect, any reduction isn't yet reflected in the budget. Professional and specialized services, I don't believe it's doubled, but those are the services that, those are a lot of the services that we provide, that provide to us, the delivery that, that delivers material between our branches, as well as the automation services that make the whole library run, that we contract with, with Sonoma County Library. It also reflects some It also reflects some of the other services that we receive from county departments, such as from IT and from HR.
Thank you very much.
All right, go ahead Vice Chair.
Do we have an idea where we would fund the 11,000 that resilience operations would cost?
I don't. I imagine that there might be some other county funds for emergencies of that type, but I don't see that in the library.
Or maybe we could look at that when the books are closed and we see how much is available.
Go ahead.
I'm also wondering, I know they had done some of this in the past, and there wasn't real big turnouts. I mean, so that's just a question. You know, if we don't have anybody showing up, which is what I was told, that some of them, so to fund something where we, people aren't taking advantage of it, whether it's necessary.
Yeah, that would be something I think your Board would consider. It's hard at the library because people did come for the purpose of being at the library, and we didn't necessarily pull them at the door about why they were there when we were in for those things. But in the past, it does seem like turnout was low, but there were some people utilizing them for that purpose.
But not sure what the purpose was, yes. Thank you.
See you.
Yes, thank you Chair. We can look at each and one of everyone's discretionary cannabis funding for that until we can determine whether or not, how to proceed with different funding, if there are different funding options. As presented, this is a balanced budget. Anytime we add, we need to find an offset. So, and I don't know, how much carryover do you have generally, Christopher?
We usually do depend on that carryover, but it's a substantial amount of our budget.
We can look into it if that's what the Board wishes.
All right. Did you have more Vice Chair?
No, I just wanted to just explore it a little bit.
Supervisor Spicke?
Yeah, I think conversations with OES and our Climate Resiliency Officer to talk about plans for what that looks like during heat events, to make sure that you're being compensated. But it's on the budget today, so for another day.
All right. Just some new action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve Budget Units 602-2 and 602-3.
Can I second?
I haven't, yeah.
Can I do that?
Sorry.
I did, but I'll go ahead and open it up for the public. At least I thought I did. Sorry.
I finally had a question I wanted to ask.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I opened.
Sorry, Elizabeth Larson, Lake County News. I'd spoken with Director Veach earlier this year about, so I have two questions. First is earlier this year about concerns because of the federal cuts. So I was kind of curious about what kind of roll down. At that point, it looked better, but things are always changing. So that's my first question. Any changes from the federal? Second, very curious, I don't know if it's in your budget now, but if you have any future plans for full digitization of some of your assets, like your microfilm collection, there's about 150 years of newspaper collection that it would be fantastic to see it be, because I was actually using it the other day because I'm one of the few nerds that uses it. And I was thinking about the fires we've had in this community and losing things, and you know, all you need is for the library to get hit and you've lost your microfilm collection, because the more books of those newspapers aren't even being held by those newspapers anymore. So I'm just curious if that is something in the future too. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Sure, those questions are actually slightly related. So the federal dollars to the library are limited. We don't usually get a lot of federal dollars. The main, the largest portion of federal dollars is through the E-rate program that reimburses us for our broadband internet we provide to the public. And that, those dollars do not appear to be reduced at this point, to my knowledge. There are dollars that come through the, from the Institute of Museum and Library Services, which is a federal agency that funds the library, to the State Library, and then are disseminated from the State Library as grants. We hadn't applied for any grants, those grants, other libraries that did have those grants though, some of them were frozen, but we weren't affected by that. Going forward, there are some State Library programs that likely will be reduced because they're not sure that they can count on federal dollars from the State Library. And one of them was actually a State Library program for digitization efforts to digitize newspapers and those kind of things, which is why I say it's related. I agree that digitization of our newspapers would be a wonderful, a wonderful thing. They are on microfilm. Many of them are duplicated, they're in multiple locations, so there's some in Lakeport and Clear Lake, and there's also some held by the State Library in their archives. So hopefully, you know, if heaven forbid, something did happen to one of our library branches, we wouldn't lose everything. But digitization would make it a lot easier to safeguard those resources and for the public to access them. It isn't in our budget right now. It is a project I've looked at in the past, but just do not have funding for it at this time.
Okay, I didn't, I thought you were pointing over there.
No, I was trying to find my pen. Do you have an estimate on what the funding, what type of funding you'd need or the approximate to be able to?
I'll tell you a number, but it's an old number, and it's a very ballpark figure, but it could cost anywhere from 50,000 to 70,000 to digitize all of our newspapers. Some of it, we wouldn't know until we actually started doing it because we don't, it depends on how many images there are in each reel, and we haven't counted them, so.
But that's something we could strive for and bring forward. Thank you.
Is there anyone else with public input or on Zoom? All right, I'll close that, and I think we had a motion and a second.
Yeah, I'll restate, at this time I'll move to approve the library budget for Units 602-2, 602-3.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is District Counsel.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. So my office has three budget units, and I can go through each one, and maybe I'll pause after each to see if your Board has any questions. I will start with the Budget Unit 1231, which is our general office budget unit. Before that, I should provide some quick background. Our office provides legal advice and assistance to the Board of Supervisors in all county departments. The function of our office includes advising various county commissions, boards, and agencies, and it involves, legal advice involves, but is not limited to areas of land use, employment, taxation, number of other civil areas in law. We, due to the confidential nature of our work, it's kind of difficult to provide more details to the level of the work that we do. That's why for the most part, I'm sticking with generalities. Now, for Budget Unit 1231, that is the general administrative budget in my office. The County Council's office is presently composed of the following. Myself is County Counsel. There's actually five staff attorneys, that's a correction, and the, it's to be updated in the narrative itself. I apologize for that correction. One senior legal administrative assistant, and one risk analyst. In the budget outline, the revenue and appropriation detail, you could see there that the increase in our office under that budget unit mainly consists of salary increases and insurance, insurance benefits increase. We're very, my office is very appreciative of the recent renovations, of course, that were made to our office as part of the, I think it was on some other budget unit. That was fairly recent, that just, that was completed late last year. And the rest of the outline for the revenues and appropriations are laid out in our narrative, just to highlight a couple of our goals moving forward for this upcoming fiscal year. My office does, we do plan to coordinate the other departments in finding out ways to improve the processing of records requests. It's a multi-departmental level type of interaction and coordination, and my office will be the one who will touch base with other departments to see how we can improve that process. And we're also, similar to some of the other few departments in the county, we're exploring an internship program for our office, for that budget unit. So unless your Board has any questions.
Yeah, I just have a question about what you were just bringing up with the public records requests. How much time of your staff is required to help with your department and other departments' requests for processing those documents?
So in any given month, it really varies. I know that it has gone to the point where we do, we do have one dedicated Deputy County Counsel who's assigned to just handling or processing, coordinating these records requests that do come in from my office. So that doesn't even count the coordination that's often necessitated by these records requests, not just from our office, but other departments as well, because these records are not solely located in our office, they're located in the departments who's maintaining those responsive records. But I would say, I think the last, last time we tracked it, which was just some time ago, I don't have the exact figure off the top of my head, but it was certainly, at any given month, estimated, we are looking at around 50 hours just from my office alone. That's not just from one deputy, but from all of our office. It could go as high as that or even beyond, but it really does vary depending on when the requests come in.
Is that an increase in recent years?
Oh, yes, it has been. That's one of the things that we did track compared to previous years, to, I think, we tracked it for as recent as 2024. And I think, you know, we presented those figures, if I recall correctly, at the last Governance Workshop, but it is, you know, it's, an update to that is warranted, of course. So we're still trying to track the figures, trying to find out ways, especially when it's a request that involves several departments, finding out ways of how to track those hours better for staff time that's coming, that's been used to work on these records requests coming from other departments, not just my office.
Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Sabate?
Yeah, thank you. Wanted to talk real quick about the, not sure if you already went over it, and maybe I'm breaking ahead, but the insurance public liability.
Oh, that's under 9919.
Should I wait, or?
Either way.
I'm just, is there a future where that might go down? Because it has a bad trend as far as what I'm seeing here, because we were as low as 2.4 in our actuals in 2122, and now we're anticipating 5.4 for this year, and that's a lot of money. I'm just curious if we're gonna, if we're hitting a peak, or if we're gonna see that continue moving upward.
The trend seems to be moving upward, as you can see from even the previous fiscal years, they tend to trend right around that same amount as far as the amount of increase. And that's primarily due to increasing premium costs. It's, it is a risk-sharing pool, so it's not just us singular, this county singularly. We're part of a group of counties that share into this insurance coverage. And when it comes to price increases or increase, it is to some extent spread out between the counties who are participants in this. But what I could do is, I could certainly pose that question to our, to the county's insurer, PRISM, to see. But going back to your question there, I haven't actually seen, I may have missed a certain fiscal year, but for the ones that I've seen in recent fiscal years past, they seem to be trending upward, where the increase seems to be consistent enough as far as the amount of the increase, but, and yet, it's been going up nonetheless.
Yeah, it's not a good trend. Is there advocacy on our part that we can do? I know it's been a long time since I've heard about tort reform, but I'm guessing that tort law is what helps keep building this up and up and up. Is that something we should talk to our representatives and see what we can do? Because insurance is killing us in every single way possible, whether it's car insurance, fire insurance, house insurance, or public liability insurance. Everything is making everything more expensive, just looking for your guidance, because this is not sustainable if it keeps going. It's almost a 20 to 25% increase on a year-to-year basis.
Yeah. And certainly, we do have a tentative, my office has a tentative meeting scheduled for, with PRISM representatives, to talk about, among other things, this particular budget unit, the topics that are under this budget unit, which is tort liability. So I could certainly have a discussion with them, see what options there are as far as advocacy is concerned, and then perhaps provide an update to you and/or the Board if there's any, if there's any, anything of substance that might come out of that discussion.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. So with that, we are in Budget Unit, moving on to Budget Unit 9919, which is the function, one of the functions of our office is to provide administrative risk management functions regarding to the county's public liability claims. That includes tort liability claims. This office reviews, my office reviews all claims for damages and has oversight for, over the third-party administrator for liability. And as you can see here, as what Supervisor Sabate pointed out, there's a trend in an increase in the insurance premiums to that. Seems to be more than, it was approximately more than at least, well, it's at least 10 to 15% of an annual increase, even if you were to go back as early as fiscal year 2324 onwards. And we, our office continues to work towards increasing the number of attorneys available for assignment of cases, because once a case has been filed, it goes through, well, even before that, there goes through a claims processing review, and then if it leads to litigation, it typically, if it's a tort, if it's a claim for damages or a complaint for damages, our office works with assigning these to outside firms to litigate for litigation and possible settlement. And that's what, that's what also plays a role with the determination of the amount of the premiums to be charged under this risk-sharing pool between us and the other counties who are sharing into these costs. So that's under Budget 9919. Your Board has any questions regarding that? I could move on to the workers' comp, workers' compensation budget, which is Budget Unit 9920. The function of our office as it relates to this budget is to provide services for workers' compensation programs, including general oversight of the county's third-party administrator for workers' compensation. And for this one, there's a little more movement here, although it's still an increase, not as much as the other budget unit, because there's been an effort, an ongoing effort from our office to try to bring the premium cost down through certain programs under the, for workers' comp, such as the county's Return to Work Program. We have a pretty robust Return to Work Program for the county's employees, and that is a contributor, that does contribute to bringing the premium cost down or maybe not increasing it as high as it could be. There is a relatively slight increase in the premium cost compared to the previous fiscal year. That is also predicated on the amount of people, county employees who are on the payroll, if there's an increase in that, typically, that does result in higher premiums being charged to the county just by having more employees in the county and potentially more employees within, who go through the workers' compensation process. So that's pretty much the summary amongst, among those three budget units. Before I end, I do want to thank administration, administration staff for helping out with this budget with these, with the revenue and appropriations. Also, thank you to my county council staff, staff at the county council's office for their support.
All right. Any other questions?
And thank you, of course, to your Board as well for supporting this budget.
I'll open it up to the public. Is there any questions?
No hands in Zoom.
No hands in Zoom. All right, I'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Budget Units 1231, 9919, and 9920.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you Lloyd.
Thank you.
Next is Information Technology. We have Shane French here.
Well, good afternoon, Chair Crandall, members of the Board. I'm Shane French, IT Director. I'm Shane French, IT Director. And our department facilitates technology implementation and assists with departmental planning for technology projects and business process improvement. We manage a network of approximately a little over 50 sites and all the network infrastructure, equipment, cabling, everything that goes along with that, and all of the systems administration tasks for things like servers and systems management, cybersecurity. We, we do a lot in, in that area to make sure that systems are secure. And of course, you know, the majority of the work that we do is driven by departmental demands, departmental projects, and departmental business requirements. For this year, significant budget changes would be, we have, we're reducing our headcount by two. We've got, we're removing the deputy director position that was unfilled. We're removing a IS analyst position that was unfilled. There's some changes in maintenance accounts, a bit of a reduction in one area just because we purchased some equipment with a longer lifespan previously. And so that's, we're gonna be able to ride that out for a number of years, so a little bit of a reduction there. Reduction capital assets accounts. Over last year, we have a $75,000 request in there for some wireless infrastructure upgrades. Aside from that, I, I think that, that pretty much covers it. If you have any questions for me.
All right, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, there was just a few things on the line items that I was curious about and, because there's not details in there to tell us what they are. And may, perhaps I need to, to get the sheet with the breakdowns. But there was clothing, personal items for 400. And then there's.
It's news to me.
Yeah. And let me see, professional and specialized moved up to 1,162,000 from 300,000, I believe.
I, I think maybe that's not my budget. I think you might be looking at somebody else's or.
Am I looking at the wrong budget? I'm sorry.
Scared me.
Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong page. Okay, I'm gonna put mine down.
All right.
If I get on the right page.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you very much, and thank you for that summary. I, I struggle a little bit. I think one of the important things that our job is, and please stay, I'm not looking for you to leave, but it's succession planning and not having, I know you're only unfunding, you're not deleting the position, but the idea of not moving forward and trying to get a deputy does not lead to succession planning, in my opinion. So at this moment, I, I, I'm gonna move forward with that, but I'd love for us to figure out how to put it back in, because I think it's always important to have a backup. Maybe it's a pun that I just said, but it's always important for us to be able to make sure there's continuity. And so just wanted to make that statement. I'm gonna make another statement, and it's one that I, I'd like to make about other departments in the long run. I think I'll make that happen when we talk about administration. But you and I have had some of these conversations. There's a lot of IT that is not within IT, and I feel sometimes that we're not always talking. And that can come with some surprises where things are happening in one department that aren't consistent with the policies or the procedures of your department. And in my opinion, I think that certain things should be centralized, and I think IT should be centralized, and you are a support service for every single one of our departments. And today's not the day to make those changes, but I really would like to have a conversation about what can be consolidated for greater efficiency, greater consistency, and more, because I think that IT is such an important aspect in everything that we do every single day, that spreading it out and having different variations of how to do that job is probably not the most efficient way for us to be able to maneuver through all the different softwares and everything that connects through the same network that we have. And so I would love to engage in that larger discussion of how do we centralize some of the services that we provide? And IT is one of them.
Did we unfund or did we, I thought we removed that position or those positions?
We did remove them.
Okay, so they're not just unfunded, just so you know, they're, they're actually removed. So, but I have the, okay. For, for your, for your other question, I mean, obviously I'm a big advocate for centralization wherever possible and simplification wherever possible, standardization wherever possible. And I, I think it makes sense very much to have that conversation.
If it was meant to be removed, it's still on the budget that I'm looking at that is based off a link of our agenda item. My personal opinion, it should stay there to remind us that it's important to have a deputy in our departments where we want to have continuity. Again, I'm okay with the idea of unfunding, but it's still there right now.
You are correct. It is still there. The intention was to remove it, but being unfunded or removed, it's still not in the budget, so it can definitely stay there if you'd like.
All right. Did I open it to the public? I don't know.
I don't think so.
No, okay, I'll open it to the public. All right, I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt budget unit 1904 or approve 1904.
Second. I have a motion in a second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries 5-0.
Shane, sorry about that. I was on the wrong budget.
That's okay.
Next is our auditor.
So sorry.
Buy a shirt.
All right, he's coming up. Are you gonna just do it right there or? You can.
You have another.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go.
Don't leave her by herself.
By myself? Oh, okay, I'll go yourself. Yeah, come over here.
There you go. All right, go ahead, Genevieve.
Sorry. Good afternoon, board, county staff attendees. I'm Genevieve Harrington, Lake County Auditor Controller, County Clerk. As you may know, the Auditor Controller County Clerk Department is a consolidated office of the County Clerk and Auditor Controller, where many of the duties and functions in the offices are addressed separately in law. Functions of the Auditor Controller include general government, accounting, auditing, reporting payroll clerk, and disaster finance. In addition to the general functions, the Auditor's Office is also responsible for developing and implementing internal control policies and procedures that will enhance transparency, compliance, safeguarding, and ethical stewardship of taxpayer funds, controlling, maintaining, and managing the county's chart of accounts, ledgers, and board-approved budget, as well as preparing comprehensive financial reports to major stakeholders and investors, and ensuring that all financial activities are approved, accounted for, and transparent. Managing and maintaining the county's complex enterprise systems, including financials, payrolls, and all of those other fund processes, to ensure operational continuity and compliance with our mandated responsibilities. Executing and mandating property tax functions with precision and compliance, working in collaboration with the assessor and tax collector to ensure accurate and timely distribution of discretionary property tax revenue to our many taxing jurisdictions. In addition to county services, the Auditor Controller provides services to 21 independent special districts, the Lake County Office of Education, the First Five Commission, and our local transit agencies. Services provided to those customers include accounting support, budget, and general ledger transaction processing. Functions of the County Clerk include marriage licensing, fictitious business name statement filing, notary oath, fish and wildlife admin fees, Form 700 processing, and so many more, so much more. This department is a general fund service department, partially funded by a combination of user fees and services to others. And none of that is possible without the amazing Auditor Controller County Clerk team that, back in the office. Okay, so let's see, we do have a couple of extraordinary asks in our budget, and they are all directly related to the new ERP system. It's a consultant, it's paying for the software. So in addition, some of our goals for this year, revise the retention schedule to match legal requirements. If you've looked at it, it's, it's been out there a while. Remember how long ago it's been out? It's been probably, no, no, like 30 years. So, so we have a retention, so the board approved a retention schedule a very long time ago, but it's really outdated, so we're gonna bring that back so that it's in alignment with current code. And assist county departments with conversion to paperless accounting processes, assist with implementation of a credit card processor. Continue county-wide accounting education to increase fiscal knowledge, which improves the fiscal oversight for the whole county, increase efficiencies for cost savings, and to make room for future revenue generating activities. And, and also, we're gonna be working on a value assessment, so bringing it back to the ERP. That is gonna be our main focus, but we'll do other things. We are gonna work on a value assessment, so it's something that Workday does provide, but it will take some interaction with the department. So I'll be reaching out to all the departments. I need to gather some data on the front end, and then we'll reach back out later so that we can go ahead and measure the value that we're getting from the system. So that's something I'll be reaching out about. And, let's see. Keep us at our time. All right, so the 1920, I'm gonna move on to the 1920 budget unit is disaster response and recovery was established for a centralized location to track and claim the costs associated with declared disasters. The responsibilities of this budget unit were absorbed by the Auditor Controller Department in 2015, and Dakota's gonna speak on that for us.
So my name is Dakota Hockett. I'm the current Assistant Auditor Controller, and prior to that, I was the Emergency Event Fiscal Manager. So the 1920 budget unit is held within the Special Revenue Fund 110, and it is funded day-to-day through state and federal administrative payments and interest revenue. The purpose of this fund is to track and claim expenses incurred due to countywide declared disasters and ensure the county qualifies for as much reimbursement as possible. The 1920 budget unit has reserves held for audit exceptions, repayment of insurance duplication of benefits, advance repayments, and emergency funds for major disasters. The audit exception reserve is to ensure monies are available for any audit findings. Most of the events are still eligible for audit, which leaves us with about $21 million in unaudited public assistance proceeds. The insurance proceeds duplication reserve is to ensure monies are available to pay back in cases where we receive both public assistance and insurance for the same exact damages. The advance repayment reserve is because we received an advance for Mendocino Fire, and we were paid in full as well. The general reserve is to ensure there is money available in the case of a major disaster. Disaster response and recovery has claimed reimbursement for 16 federally declared disasters. This budget unit has also administered the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Safety Act funding, PG&E settlement funds, and the Public Safety Power Shut-Off Funds. The budget itself is driven by the anticipated disaster funding. Overall, outside of the administrative payments received, which are used to fund our position allocations and office expenses, the majority of the state and federal disaster revenues received leave our budget unit as reimbursement to other departments for expenses incurred during the disaster event. As for some notable updates this year, COVID-19 has been fully reimbursed to the departments. We are no longer waiting for any funds for COVID-19 from a 1920 budget unit perspective. We actually received the final payment and reimbursed the departments after we submitted our budget, so we will need to remove the $38,000 allocated to Object Code 2301. Headway has also been made on older events, and we have received final inspection reports from CALUES for Mendocino Fire, Sulfur Fire, Lightning Complex Fire, and Cache Fire. Final inspection reports have to be reviewed by FEMA, and once reviewed, FEMA can send an audit waiver for an event. I'm happy to report that an audit waiver has been received for COVID-19, meaning the three-year retention period for COVID-19 documentation has begun. Goals for the coming year include wrapping up older events, preparing for audits, remitting private property debris removal insurance collections to the state, and creating a fiscal user packet for staff who will be submitting disaster event costs. This concludes the disaster response and recover, recovery budget presentation. Thank you for your time and attention.
That concludes the department. So, but we're open to any questions?
Supervisor Pisca.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I know it's gonna be a big year with this migration, and I know it's gonna take a lot. But also, I'm looking forward to seeing some substantial savings next year, especially going paperless, which doesn't seem like it costs a lot, but I know that it really does, especially with our paycheck papers and everything else that's very expensive to print.
We've been scanning for probably four months and just going back, taking out all the staple. We've just been so paper, where your receipts taped on, and you can't feed that through a scanner. It's been, yeah, so it is definitely gonna take some time and some expense, but one, it's a one-time project.
It's worth doing.
Once we're done, we don't ever have to do it again.
It's worth doing.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And plus, it's really, really neat for, if somebody requires, or asks about a payment or an invoice or something, to just be able to pull it up on a computer rather than, one, either finding the physical folder and then hoping that you can get to it, or going down to our separate storage, pulling out the box, pulling out the file, bringing it back to the office, and then obviously doing all the reverse.
Do you have experience with that, Dakota?
No, not at all. I've never had to do it.
We'll get that document for you, just one minute.
Shortly. It'll be just a moment, please.
Supervisor Rowan.
Yes. You know what? The only thing, and it's throughout the whole budget, is backup information on a lot of this. For instance, like the Valley Fire, the Canyon Fire, the, and people that have been here before, they're gonna understand what the $23,000 or $78,000 is for. But for me, being new to this, I don't have the information available. And, and like I said, throughout the whole entire budget, it's, it's like that, where we don't have the documentation to understand what the $78,000 is for, for a fire that took place, you know, a decade ago. So just, just food for thought on that. And then going back to the, to the first portion of it, make sure I'm on the right budget. Look up my page number. Editor, so that would be 13, yes, 14, okay. So proof and specialized services, professional and specialized, or professional and specialized is what it states. So I noticed it went from like, you know, a couple of years ago, from 200,000, 224,000 up to 1,282,000, and that's just a big jump.
Which object code is that?
Let me see, that would be 23-80, and I hope, yeah, I'm on the right page.
Yeah, no. You are. I always get the naming of 2380 and 2830 confused.
Right, right. And I think. It was just a big jump.
It seems that we did have an object code change. Yeah, consult, some, where we budgeted in prior years, it changed, and so.
It's combined or something?
And then also, this year, we're anticipating increased professional server, or professional and specialized services, just because of the implementation of the new system. That's, I believe, a big portion of it.
Yeah, it's like up about a million dollars.
Now, if, but I believe that, I don't have it in front of me, because you'll see another budget, or another object code as drastically reduced from a prior year.
Okay.
So I wanna say about 500, I feel like about 500 went from an object code to another, so I just don't have it in front of me.
And then I believe we also budgeted for the potential, so we're operating off of a very old, our accounting system, we call it the AS400, and so we have a contingency, which is in that 2380, while we're implementing and switching over, just in case switching over causes any sort of problems with the current system, we can't support that in-house. And so we got this as like a one-time, just in case something happens while we're switching over, we will have the money to immediately go and pay somebody to fix it.
Okay, yeah, because it looked like you guys had actually requested 282,900, so 283,000, and then admin had added a million, which brought it up to a million 280.
And so I believe it was that, and then the additional consulting services that will support us through implementation.
Okay.
Right. Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you. Thank you for those two items. I see a lot of funding going in and then going out, mainly because of the Workday project. That'll be something to look forward to in seeing how it impacts our efficiencies. I will continue with some of what I said earlier, where I also feel that if not in your department, but a consolidation of accountants into an accountant-type of department, you're the oversight of like the public, representing the public, to make sure that we are doing what we're supposed to. But as we move into a new accounting software, if we had a centralized accounting area where everybody followed the same rules, you wouldn't probably have a headache of trying to figure out what this department decided to do in this process, that no one else follows this process. And I just think if we centralized the workload, it would make it much more efficient for you to be able to follow the bouncing ball of what. of what every other department is trying to accomplish, and they're good intent, right? And I just think that we have a lot of decentralized processes, and this is another one of those that if it was centralized, separate from the auditor, because you're the oversight of that, would really help out in the efficiencies and making sure that we have consistency in how we go through our processes, which could include also procurement within that department as well. Because that is also, I'm sure, a little bit of a headache to try to figure out what are you trying to get accomplished. And so I just want to put it out there just because I think it's an opportunity with a new software to try and get everybody on board doing the same thing, rather than eventually seeing everybody going their own ways and then saying, hey, I need a special program to do what I need in this, which is what got us in a little bit of our mess in the first place.
Yeah, I think, you know, the system not being able to keep up with the needs of the departments as part of that, and so that's, we spent a lot of time working with the consultant and the departments to assess the needs, the ones that we can address with this type of system. So we're definitely, yeah, we're definitely trying to address all the needs we can, and then, you know, to be able to measure it. And so a couple of things to what you said, this, you know, it's like the system is going to help centralize, even though the accounting, the transaction will still initiate at the department, which it kind of needs to. You need the department to know what they're paying for, but it's going to come through. Right now, gosh, one of the biggest time, I'll say wasters, is when the account number is wrong, and that happens all the time. The accountant has to stop what they're doing and go figure out the right account number. This system will eliminate that. That won't happen. You will not be able to submit a transaction unless the account is correct, if it's yours, if you have the authority. So much is taken care of before it even hits my, our office. And so there's a lot, there's going to be a lot oversight where a lot of times a body is doing it, but the system's going to be able to do it for us as well. And in terms of procurement, that's something that, you kind of described a general services department that we, we don't have. And so we're trying to build something like that. So we're working with admin and with this system to try to build in the oversight for procurement without having an actual department that would normally oversee that. So I do think there's a lot of opportunity.
And then, and just a last comment for disaster. It'd be great to have a full presentation in the future just to kind of break down, I think it's what, $13 million in our reserves currently? And just what is all that money allocated to? What is it being held for? Is it to repay when the state says repay? Is it to repay our departments when we get approved to disperse the funds? It's just kind of a nebulous thing that I'm not 100% on. And it would be nice to have a full, I know you broke down, some of these are done, some of these are not, but it would be nice to get a full presentation on that, just to get a better understanding since it's such a large sum in there.
And something just to know right off the top is that 3.4 million, we know for sure we owe back. So that is, and so, but yeah, we'll plan to do a full presentation.
All right. We'll go ahead and open it up to the public. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this presentation. Come on up.
Elizabeth Larson, Lake County News. Two questions for you. For the layperson, when you say eligible for audit, what do you mean?
When I say eligible for audit, that means that we have not received any audit waiver, and we have not started the retention period. It means that CAL OES could come at any time, sorry, the California Office of Emergency Services could come at any time and request an audit of our event and the documentation that we have, and they could potentially de-obligate funds.
Okay, so, so for the community, what the community needs to know then is that the Valley Fire is still open for audit, potentially, 10 years later, as we're coming up on the anniversary?
Yes.
Now, can you tell me also, in your 1920 budget unit, when it says professional services for, you know, the Valley Fire? Again, Supervisor Owen brought that $23,000 up. What's that for exactly?
So that is for the lingering items. I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but at the start of an event, a disaster event, we submit projects to CAL OES, and they get approved or denied through FEMA. And then they reimburse us for those. They review all of our claims, and they send us money, and at this point in time, $23,000 is still lingering. We're waiting for the final inspection reports because those are, what happens is CAL OES reviews everything, then they send their findings to FEMA. FEMA reviews it, they do their own final inspection report, and then we get a letter back.
Okay.
And so for most of these events, only CAL OES has reviewed. And so we're still waiting for those inspection reports, and at those inspection reports, they either, they say, sorry, you're not going to get this money, or, okay, yes, we do still owe you, we will send you an obligation of payment, or a notice of obligation, and then a notice of payment, or we don't get anything and we just have to close it.
Okay.
It's just, we don't know until we hear back from the state and federal government.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Just a brief question. I know sometimes we hire like an insurance review agency to make sure, like, is this money that we're supposed to get from the insurance, or is this money we're supposed to get from CAL OES? Is that possibly some of the professional services that is paid for through that fund? I think we did like Tetra Tech or something like that, for at least the Mendocino complex, I remember, we struggled to get that done.
So Tetra, so that's a little bit different. It's the Private Property Debris Removal Insurance Collections, or PPDR for short. So what happens is when a property is destroyed, FEMA typically comes through, or CAL OES comes through as CAL Recycle, and they clear out the debris remaining because it's a hazard. When a homeowner accepts that, I don't know, that debris removal, they sign something in there that says any part of your insurance that is solely for debris removal will be remitted to the county. And then the county is obligated to remit it to the state. And so that's what we had Tetra Tech for. As far as I know, I came on in 2021, and I did work with them, but they might have done prior work. So what they were doing is they were contacting the homeowners and providing reasonable effort to collect that PPDR insurance collections. So I don't quite think that's the same, but that is what we use Tetra Tech for.
Thank you.
All right.
Just found an actual provider. This is a reimbursement. We're waiting for this to.
Ready for action?
Yes.
Okay. Sir Chair, I move that we approve budget units 1121 and 1920. Second?
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Yes. We will take a five-minute break. Come back. Let's just come back at 2:30. Yeah.
Oh, it's this guy.
That's how I'm greeted?
We are back, and we will go on to our next budget item with the Treasury Tax Collector, Patrick Sullivan.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Chair Crandall, thanks for the opportunity to present today. Patrick Sullivan, Treasury Tax Collector. I'm here with Liz Martinez, the Assistant Treasury Tax Collector. Just the overview, as you all know, our office has three divisions. There's Treasury Tax, which covers property tax, cannabis tax, transient occupancy tax, any tax that the county runs. And then there's the Court and County Collections Division. It's primarily court-ordered debt, but we do collect debt for other county departments as well. And Treasury, just to be clear, that's, does the county's banking as well as investments. So I would just touch on some of the operations in our department right now. I think before diving into everything else, it's probably valuable for your board to know that we do have a little bit of a staffing crunch at the moment. Our vacancy rate is 10%, which normally would not be that bad for us, but due to employee leave status, we're really effectively operating at a 20% to 30% vacancy at any given time if everyone else is present. So it is at the point where it's impacting our operations. So that, that's difficult for us. We are hopeful that the salary increase for the accountant positions, which are the, sort of the main workforce in our office, that that may help somewhat with recruitment. That position is difficult, though. I think, given maybe the position people are in their career, a lot of people do have families or get married or have children, and because of health insurance, that has been a, an issue for us with recruitment and retention in that position. So I know that's a long-term problem, but I would just throw it out there. It is limiting our pool. Let's see. So current projects we have going on, we are implementing a changeover in custodial banking, which I think we've mentioned before. We're moving from US Bank to BMO. So that's ultimately going to save us money, but that is a large operation. Probably something we would have preferred not to have done the same year as the ERP Workday, if we could have helped this, but some things cannot be helped. Other major project, TOT enforcement, which your board's been updated on before. Enforcement of unsecured property tax is something else we're doing. We were just in front of you with a contract about that. So we're hoping that these are going to help drive revenue. They do take staff time, though. But fortunately, even with our reduced staffing, a lot of the technology and upgrades that we've done are allowing us to continue with these projects. So we're trying to strike a balance in what we tackle, but these ones are definitely able to proceed. As you know, we're going through the Workday transition. Our current system, I think, as you heard from the Auditor Controller's office, really is sort of on life support. It is always a concern. Anytime there's updates or anything, that something can so easily knock us out of whack. So we're looking forward to transitioning to a new system that's going to be safe and secure. I want to touch on Court Collections. It's money-wise, the smallest, one of the smaller programs that we run. But it is a lot of work. It's time-intensive, and it is a kind of a threat to our, our budget. We still retain obligations where we have to make payments to the state. We have to cover certain things. So as revenue goes down, the legislature keeps decreasing fines and fees. They've limited our ability to collect, yet we're not relieved of these responsibilities. The other issue, I mean, we're, we're having a great deal of success with the tax intercept. deal of success with the tax intercept program, which we started this year, and that's actually the only reason our revenue is not down. Most counties are going down, we're actually staying fairly stable because of that. However, I would say a lot of the money we're bringing in now with the intercept and also wage garnishments, bank levies, we're collecting for victims from criminal cases, but victim restitution is an unfunded mandate. So, as a county, we help people collect on these, we pursue the defendant and try to recover those funds for the victim. But, we're doing that sort of at our own cost. So, it's something to keep in mind, as more and more of our revenue is associated with victim restitution, we're not recovering money. We don't take money out of the victim's pocket. So, that is something we're going to have to keep an eye on as costs accelerate there. Future issues that we're dealing with, there's tax sales. As you know, that's sort of hit an unsustainable level in our office. We're looking at that low value ordinance, which will be brought back to your board. That will hopefully bring us to a more normal workload there, especially because each sale, it takes a year to prep, it takes two to three years to close them out. So, as we build this inventory of sales, our backlog grows. We want to do credit card acceptance for departments, that's something that I think is going to have to wait until the workday transition's done. We've onboarded several departments with credit cards in the last several months, which has been great, but at the same time, electronic banking, there's definitely a learning curve for county staff. We've had struggles with the rapid timelines that come in, previously when departments take payment by check. I guess it's more at their pace that they can bring the money in. The problem, once you integrate everything in electronic banking with e-check and credit card, debit card, the money is hitting our account right away. The department and our office have to work on it quickly. If people aren't up to speed, it creates a much larger workload in our office, and that's what feeds back to the staffing issue I was bringing up, is that transitioning these departments over, electronic banking flips some of that work back on to our office instead of the department. So, that's something we're wrestling with, and at this point, we're hoping to do a master agreement where we can accept credit cards, hopefully utilize Workdays Program, integrate it in if we can, and have an option to offer all departments, so that we stop having departments do their own thing and get everybody working the same way. Other issue that's come up, that we're not quite sure what the impact's going to be on the Treasury pool and investments and budget is, we have smaller districts in the county that are being approached by financial advisors pitching that they should invest their money or manage their funds. It is a concern for us, the costs associated with this are significantly higher, sometimes, I mean, in this case, six to eight times higher than what we pay our investment advisor. The county, Treasury, and Otter Controller both provide a lot of services to these districts, and we were managing their funds. So, now it's a little confusing if they're trying to have one foot in, one foot out. They can sort of actually become a threat to the stability of our pool. So, we're looking into this right now, we're trying to get a grasp on which districts are being approached. Some may have the authority to do it, some may not, but that's an issue we're probably going to have to bring back to your board and figure out how to approach this in sort of a reasonable way. Other than that, unless, do you have anything to add? Yeah, we're happy to take any questions, those are the highlights.
Supervisor Pyska.
I don't have any questions, I just want to give you and your department major kudos because you have been increasing revenue significantly over the years, especially with the management of our assets and the interest income, and now the TOT enforcement. I know you have your fingers in a lot of things, but we're in a really strong financial position because of your department. So, just, I just want to thank you both and all of your staff.
Yeah, thank you. We have a big team and everyone's been working really hard on all these projects.
Yeah, you have, and it really shows, and it's putting us in a strong position.
Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, capital asset-wise, are you adding those two things or are you replacing?
So, that...
I apologize, the safe and the currency counter, because I thought I remembered we bought a currency counter at one point already.
So, we do have a currency counter, but we only have the one that we bought in, was that maybe three years ago, four years, five years ago? Okay. So, the most recent currency counter we have is really the...
It's what?
Best mechanism, it's the best mechanism, I'm going to be careful of what I say. It is our best available tool to battle counterfeit bills, which are on the rise and a significant problem. We have had, both in our electronic banking, we have suffered coordinated attacks against our electronic banking. Some of these attacks have been coupled with physical attempts in bank branches that coincide with the electronic attack. This is a little bit new for us. We've gone through a lot to secure all of our accounts, and they are secure, but right now, our primary remaining vulnerability would be counterfeit bills, which are on the rise. The other cash counters are supposed to detect counterfeit, but they're older and there's not really the ability to update them. So, the best thing we can do is to get new equipment.
Okay. And are we still seeing a lot of cash as far as our cannabis taxes being collected goes, or have we figured out a way to go through like a community, I can't think of the name right now, I apologize.
Credit union?
Yeah, like a credit union, thank you. I know they have a lot of banking with the credit unions.
Yeah, I think banking access for cannabis industry has increased from what we've observed. And then, as far as your other questions, we could probably get into that more offline.
Okay. And my last comment is, I don't know what they're doing now, I know the transition from Bank of the West to BMO was disastrous. Their customer service, in my opinion, is horrible. The people who work at the branch, amazing, but overall, the system, I know that I had a lot of personal issues, a lot of other people had personal issues. In the city of Clear Lake, they were not able to even process their payroll at one point. So, I would just please walk cautiously, if that's the approach. I think you know what's best for what's needed, but I just wanted to at least caution you that there has been some issues with transition, and let's hope that's not the case for us.
Yeah, and if they can't meet our needs, we definitely will not go with them. We're just in the early stages of implementation, and certainly, we were aware of some of the issues. Custodial banking is a different branch, so as far as I'm aware, these impacts aren't present for us, but we are mindful of that.
Vice Chair.
Appreciate all the work. That sounded concerning with the operations at up to 30% vacancy. Do we expect that to be extended period?
Well, we just had a failed recruitment for the accountant position that we were trying to hire, so we're posting it again. We're hoping to have more luck. I would say the other ones, we're going to have a staff member return, hopefully in August, by the end of August. So, that will alleviate some of our issue, but that could still leave us with a 20% effective vacancy, which we can operate, but our ability to take on new projects is limited, limited by it.
Thank you for the additional info.
Supervisor Owen.
I just want to say thank you for what you guys are doing, you're doing a fabulous job.
Thank you.
All right. In 3195 fines, forfeit penalties, it went from 285K, and then now, there's nothing requested. You just want to give a reason why? Does that make sense?
So, it looks like it was put in the loan.
I thought maybe you just weren't, there was no need to collect on something?
So, it looks like it was just a mistake in our detail of the budget that was submitted. We did, this amount should be in 3195, not 1050. So, can you make that correction, please?
Yeah, we can make that change, thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would have a comment or question? Any on Zoom? I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Gere, I move that we approve Budget Unit 1122.
With the...
As amended.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Animal Care and Control.
Good afternoon, everybody.
All right.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Director Wilkins of Animal Care and Control. Before we start, if you guys will allow me a moment to say...
Yes.
Thank you to you guys. I think this will be probably my last time in front of you guys, so I want to say thank you. On behalf of the department, we appreciate the fact that everyone is on the same page as far as the improvement of the department and wanting to see the department succeed. And so, me as a director, I would say that has been helpful for me. So, I want to say I appreciate that. But also, on behalf of the admin team, not just with budget, but overall, being supportive of our organization, helping us as we try to navigate through some of this and have that huge learning curve, it's been so beneficial to have you guys with us, so I appreciate it. Again, not just on the budget thing, but things in general. Also, helping Joseph, Joseph Parks, who's here today, has by title, a staff analyst, but has taken on a major role in assisting me with figuring out, again, going through this learning curve of the budget and figuring out what we need and how we want to kind of operate it. So, he's been a lifesaver for me, working with me directly and working with the different departments and admin to get these things done. So, I wanted to take that opportunity to say that first, which also, because he's been able to assist me so much, I did not want to rob him of the opportunity to sit in front of you guys and kind of give a quick overview of the budget, as I can do this anytime. I mean, you guys have seen me enough, so he's helped me so much, I want to be able to highlight him and give him an opportunity to kind of speak about it. But, as he gives an overview, and I want to still just shine, I am here to answer, we are here to answer any detailed questions that you guys have as it relates to the budget. Joseph?
Thank you, Greg, and thank you, board, members of the community. We just have two budget units, so it's not a complex budget, but it was difficult when Greg and I both arrived at about the same time to tell the story of what was happening with the budget. So, we definitely leaned a lot on the Otter Controller Department, the admin department, to help us navigate some of the historical knowledge and some of the use of the accounts and understanding the chart of accounts by definition. To this day, we're still getting, you know, hey, 2830 and 2380 are, they're tricky, but it's really been helpful for us. And we had a whole bunch of great ideas and wanted to aggressively attack some of the issues that we've seen with Animal Care and Control. And, of course, it's a very emotional department and a very big need to have the care addressed for the health of the county and its residents through the animals. So, we tried to do our best this round, starting just at the end of the calendar year of 2024, to try to put things in places where they seem to go. So, we were looking at comparable years back to 1920, all the way up through the current actuals of 2324, and trying to establish the trends of where money was actually spent and maybe not how the budget started. So, that was our main goal, to do this time around, and make sure that we understood how to tell the story of where we are wanting to start, before we start making additional changes. We had some very nice donations this year that kind of helped us get caught up with some of the expenditures that we needed to make, that we already knew that we needed to make. But 2703 was all about, do we have any facility upgrades that we can make, and do we have enough trucks in our fleet, just to make sure that we're prepared to maintain a full staff. That also carries most of, well, all of our permanent positions, except for the registered vet technician and the veterinarian. All the other staffing positions are under our general fund, 2703. So, we wanted to make sure that anything that was going to be in that fund was at least caught up to what we were supposed to be having. We do have the additional truck that we have put out an extraordinary request for this year. The boxes have already been ordered. There was a little bit of a holdup last fiscal year on getting those ordered, and they are 200-day lead time. So, we're getting things put together with Central Garage and making sure that everything's ready for us to have a full officer staff, and we are looking pretty full right now. We actually have four officers, and so, we're hoping that we can, yeah, we had a little bit of a turnover thing when we started there, too, but we're looking pretty full, and we want to be able to have the computer stations and the trucks all ready to go for that full staff, once they get fully trained, and we're just about there. Moving on to 2711, that is our vet clinic and what we consider to be our animal care side of things. That is where our donations go, and I don't know if you've had a chance to go through the budgets, but we wanted to move quite a few things that we do as animal care services to more directly reflect in the 2711 budget unit, but it seemed like it might be a little bit too confusing to do all of that so soon. So, it was making it seem like we were going to have all of our revenue go into a totally different budget unit. And so, we're going to take a step back and make sure that we have an intelligent approach to that, and not just put everything on the clinic's side when we only have an RVT so far. And we've been very creative with the other veterinary services, but over the years, that's where we saw a big shift from our animal care costs, going from the veterinarian's salary and the services that were coming through, having a vet on-site, to all of our partnering vet clinics, and the cost is quite a bit more going through those third-party partners. But, we have found a way to function, and the grant that we received, it was a one-time grant, but I think, Greg, you have the number on that, but it was projected to be somewhere around, should I say 800?
We're easily going to go over about 800 animals served through that grant, and those will be mostly, I would say 98% of those will be animals in the community. So, not even animals that we served in our shelter. These will be spay neuters that will be done in the community. So, that grant of 120,000 will easily surpass. We don't have all the numbers now, because some of that's, they're projected to go out and funds we're allocating, but those services haven't been rendered yet. But, if we get anywhere close to those MOU numbers, we're going to easily surpass 180 animals, being spayed and neutered.
So, with that being said, that was our main thing, was to tie all of our daily operations, and since I, with Greg monitoring as well, we have been able to look at all of the invoices and get all of those bills caught up with the vet clinics and everything figured out on the daily operations of what account strings we're using, where things are going, where they're probably going to be needed next year. That was our main focus, was to be able to have that in place as best as possible before the fiscal year started, instead of trying to just move everything around throughout the fiscal year. So...
Bottom line being that, we wanted to take the time to clean things up and make sure that the money that we had and what we allocated told a story, so that eventually, yes, we're going to need additions. There's tons of things that we need, I'm not going to deny that. But, I would much rather have a plan put in place and have the information and be able to track the data, so that we can come in front of the boards and say, this is what we need, this is, you know, this is how it will positively affect our department, and kind of make it tell a more of a story. So, what we've done this year is kind of done some of that foundational work, so that, obviously, there'll be somebody replacing me soon, that person doesn't have to come in and start from scratch, they can at least start to continue to evaluate the data and what's going in, so they can make a complete ask with facts and not what I like to call field facts. We come in with the actual things that we need. So, we took, that's what we did when we took the step back. Like you said, we have tons of things we wanted to advocate for and all those things, but it's probably best, I think you guys will respect it, and the public will respect it more, if we take a step back and before we make an ask, clean up our own house a little bit and figure out what exactly we need. We know there's a need, but we want to be able to pinpoint exactly what that need is. So, that's why the budget looks kind of like what it looks like now.
All right. Well, thank you for that, Supervisor Sabatier. So, you're grabbing your pen, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Welcome, Joseph, I was not aware that you were there. Good to see you. Director Wilkins, you're going to be missed. Thank you very much for not only propping up the department, but leaving it in better shape than you found it in the first place. Thank you very much for not only propping up the department, but leaving it in better shape than you found it in the first place. That's greatly appreciated and I think speaks highly of who you are. I do have some requests and it's not to say that your request is wrong or bad. A while ago, we created a roadmap task force. In our original meetings of the roadmap task force, animal control was involved and we wanted them to also do proactive enforcement within the mapped area that we had declared was our focus, which was Clear Lake Oaks at the time. Since then, roadmap task force has evolved into copter, which now takes on the entire North Shore area. I would like to find a carve-out of whether it's the funding that's already available through copter or other cannabis taxes that are available within the buckets that we have to have an additional proactive animal control officer. Because if we don't start reducing the problems that we have, which are not your making and your capacity forbids you to be successful in this pretty much, you're, you're reactive to what people's needs are, not proactive. We need to hold people responsible and accountable for being pet owners and we don't have enough capacity to be able to do that on our own. We are just trying to save when people are, are asking us for help. I would like to see one dedicated officer for that. Now, because of conversations I've had, I wouldn't mind putting flexibility that if you go from four officers to three officers, that that officer can be utilized for the rest of the county. When you're back to four, that officer goes back to being proactive in that specific area because the rest of the county needs help. But I want us to show proof on how it can be done to reduce the issue. And I think it's an economic development issue where if people come here and see stray dogs roaming around, they're not going to want to be here and they're not going to want to even play at the park here. And that is an issue. And I think we need to clean our yard up and make sure that it is safe and that it is perceived as a positive environment that people want to engage with. And I think it starts by providing one additional animal control officer related to copter and making it happen just like we've seen copter, the roadmap task force at the time, be successful in the Clear Lake Oaks area with all the things that we were able to clean it up from. So that's, that's one of my asks. My, my second ask is in the vet clinic. Appreciate the work that you're doing. I don't know if it's with Pet Fix or with others, but I know that we've had some other groups coming through and I'm sure it's similar. But eventually we do need a vet and we are never going to get a vet if we are not willing to pay for a vet. And I think that either we need to reduce it from two people on that budget to one and really pay that person to be able to do the job and attract somebody to the job. But at the rate that we pay, and if we continue to try the same thing again and again and again, we're just going to end up in the same place. I would prefer we have somebody in-house than depend on nonprofits to be available for us. But that's what I would like to see is add one to copter for animal control officer and change up however we can our animal vet budget so that we can attract a vet. I know it's difficult, but we, we need to change what has failed unfortunately.
And just to respond to that, I agree with you a hundred percent on both, on both points. There were things that we, again, when we had our big overall plan for what we wanted to kind of tackle, those were kind of some things we wanted to hit on, but we weren't able to. But yes, when we talk about the task force initially, I agree with you. It has so many benefits to it. And that is where I would hope when I put together my strategic plan for three years out is that we were moving toward a more proactive approach to not just in that area, but in general with how we approach animal control in general. So I think there is a benefit to if we were able to allow this to happen, to use this as a pilot to possibly transition the entire department over time to a, not a reactive, but a proactive approach to how we deal with things. And that will, that will show positive in a lot of ways in terms of enforcement. As you said, with even with our overall revenue, revenue of licenses and things of that nature, there's ways to strategically impact our daily operation positively by doing that. So I, I'm on board with that. And for the vet, I'm just going to say ditto. I agree.
I know for copter, when we met to develop copter, it was only the sheriff's department, community development, admin and myself. We didn't have animal control there because I think we were going through a transition at the time. And if that was going to be the direction we're going, you know, I thought we were going to have a different conversation on the side, not here. But either way, that would be, need to come from the copter budget. They wouldn't need to. Is that what you're saying too?
Or carve out of the nine point three million dollars that we have or the other buckets that has money in it. I think that it's a good use because it's not a good look.
I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, is that the budget that was put together for roadmap task force had it included. And so this one didn't. I think it was just because at the time we, we were going through that transition. So it's either there or we just add more to it or however. And I think it's, it's a good way to go. And we, we did have that in the roadmap when you guys started that. So go ahead.
Well, we are in transition again. So I think what you've presented is very solid. It's where we are right now. It's cleaning the house. And I think taking these suggestions on can happen in the future, but we don't have a director yet. Joseph, you're here. You hear the notes. Stick a pin in this. That's what I think. I don't want to put a bunch of changes on a department that doesn't have leadership right now. So Director Wilkins, I'm going to miss you so much. You've been incredible in, in this department and for this county. And thanks for staying on these last couple of months too. I know, you know, you, you probably had to adjust some plans, but that just shows how, how dedicated you have been to this position. You know, I think we just keep things as is and we wait until we have our new plan or our new leader. And it sounds like you have a three-year plan that's at least drafted out.
And it does, I can make sure it, it carves out more about this topic in particular. Because it does talk about it in a little bit, but I can, I have a couple of days left. I can expand on it.
We can get there when we're ready, but right now stability has been the goal and I appreciate that from both of you.
Supervisor Owen?
Yeah, I actually think that we do need to write this into the budget as well. I think having a vet on staff is going to be huge and I think it's well-needed, to be honest, in, in Lake County to have somebody there. And I kind of did what, what Supervisor Bruno had mentioned. But I'd also like to add that I think it's important to have somebody at least part-time during the weekend hours. If we can have that added into the, and I don't know if it's
An officer?
An officer, yes. Because as you know, there, you know, there's a lot of stuff that happens during those two days when there's nobody around. And so that's something I would like to see looked at before we, you know, by the time we come back for the final.
Because I do, I do know we were talking about some scheduling adjustments to try to at least cover for Saturday for now. But yes, I, if perfect case scenario, yeah, we'd have seven-day-a-week coverage, but.
Yeah, because we're planning for the next, you know, this budget year. So whether you're here or, you know, you're, the, the next person coming in, to have that funded would be huge.
And just one more thing that I thought about. So when speaking of the, having the full-time vet, that was, we were looking through the budget and where we're spending a lot of our money. That, a lot of our money is coming out of having to go to off-site places to get those things done. So if we had that internal vet that were able to do our services and on top of that, help the community with some low-cost efforts in, in a way that would kind of at least neutralize where we are and not, we won't have so much going out. We'll still have some going out, but it wouldn't be as much as it is now. We had to, I don't know the exact numbers, but I'll quote. But we had to significantly increase basically our quote-unquote spay-neuter budget just so that we can continue without a veterinarian on staff to be able to pay to have these procedures and things done. So.
Sure. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Well, I definitely want to keep the conversation going on some of these additions and changes. I don't think we could do it today, but I definitely think it's all, I appreciate all the work and getting us to where we are and we definitely need to look at these things and keep this conversation going.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Just one thing I did miss and that for the, the future at least, because it changes some of our budget. And I'm sorry, Vice Chair Rasmussen. But the city of Lakeport has had the same exact contract with us for twenty to thirty years. And what I see is a woefully underpaid service that we are providing. And we need to update that contract ASAP so that we don't provide services without pay from them. And so I think that's one of the things that can help compensate for money needed for other things. And, and while I don't disagree that in transition, we don't want to change things, I think putting it in the budget is smart and allows for those changes to happen when those changes are ready to occur. Rather than if we don't put it in here, then we're probably going to have to wait another year. And the problem is yesterday, not today. So I would like to see staff come back with some options on how to make that happen.
And I, I don't disagree, you don't have to apologize. I actually don't disagree. I was working on that contract when I was police chief and was in agreement that those fees needed to go up. And with all the things that have happened, it unfortunately hasn't happened. But I too want to get that readdressed at the earliest opportunity.
Maybe I should say sorry, Kevin.
There you go. All right, I will open it up to the public. If there's anyone that would like to comment, come on up.
Elizabeth Larson, Lake County News. I have three questions for you. First of all, you just had a very successful adoption event. So I'm wondering if you are looking at doing these more commonly with the calculus that if we can empty the shelter out, we save money and grief and heartache, all of that. So number one, that's my first question. Number two is, is there any, and I haven't heard of this for a long time, so you may be doing it. Is there any focused effort on really ramping up enforcement of our spay-neuter ordinances in this county? We, we've had these things on the books for twenty years. Can we get those, can we start, if we're not doing it already, what impact would that have? And then the third thing is, you know, you've heard the old parable about who's throwing the babies in the river. Somebody needs to go upstream and who's throwing the babies in the river. Where are all the puppies coming from? Where are all the kittens coming from? Do we know? Can we track it? Is it backyard breeding? Is it, you know, accidental because people can't afford to go to a vet that's been bought up by a private equity firm that has jacked up the rates three times? So do we know those, so, you know, do we have those answers? Because I can tell you, if you can figure that out and take a roadshow around the county and start really telling people what's going on, it is a passionate project. So I'm just wondering if, anyway, I'm just kind of curious if any of that has fit into your calculations and if those things could help turn this proactive, at least in the public's view.
I'll take the first one first. As far as the overall adoption event, sure, we would love to do more adoption events. That adoption event in particular was done because we had a national organization that was funding it. So we still get the funds from the, even though it was a quote-unquote free adoption event, they were still calculating each event that we, each adoption that we had and they're going to reimburse us. So I think the better approach, well, another additional approach is also figuring out ways internally to reduce some of the barriers that we have currently in place. We have a lot of things that are, that are stopping, I, I, what I consider automatic adoptions from happening as much because we have these extra rules and things in place. And so it's been part of my job since I've been here and it's something I'm going to recommend to whoever takes over is that we seriously look at that and take, take down some of our own barriers for adoption. Because we can, in a way, repopulate our own community with our own animals that are spayed and neutered versus someone going down the street and picking up the dog from the local Walmart or convenience store. Like that's, if, if someone wants an animal, they're going to get an animal. So we want to figure out a ways to have them get them from us. Because they're already in compliance. So that's the, as far as the adoption point, that's something that I think we should probably look more into and we are. Your other question in terms of where are all the puppies coming from? I was going to try to be funny and say mom and dad, but yes, we know that. But no, they're coming for, there's, I, we need to get more data and that's something we want to do by, we're transitioning our team over to using our software and being able to track some of these things. We're not currently doing that as much. We're doing a better job of it now, but we have not historically been doing that. But I think just from anecdotally speaking, speaking with people in the community, it is having access to spay and neuter. And so yes, we can go out and enforce and write as many citations as humanly possible and do all those things. But if the vet clinics are backed up and not able to do spay-neuters, they're just backed up. So we're just, we're just chasing our tail. What we're just, so it's figuring out a way, whether it's through, eventually when we get a vet and providing that resource, because that's something I've been able to do in the past. Is when we've had, I can write you a citation and then say, hey, but you're going to come to our shelter and you're going to come in on this date and you're going to get it done. Where now I can say, hey, you have thirty days to get your animal altered. But again, if all the vet clinics are backed up, there's nothing you can do. So our hands are kind of tied in that way. So we have to figure out internally, how can we put our own resource to be able to, at least from an enforcement standpoint, be able to back that up? Maybe we don't provide that, those services to everyone initially. But when we're writing citations that we're following up, you know, we can make your appointment next day to come see us and get X, Y, and Z done. So. I hope that kind of answers your question.
Any other public comment? All right, if you can unmute and.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Angela Amaral. I wanted to say thank you to Supervisor Sabatier, Supervisor Crandall for bringing up the issue of adding an animal control officer to copter. There's a lot of issues with animals and it's a big concern for residents on the North Shore. It's been discussed at each of the area MAC meetings at different points in time. I just let you know, it's also one of the top items of concern noted on the circulating. Right now, we're circulating a D-three MAC Alliance survey to find out what issues are really important to the residents of North Shore. And animal control is one of the top, in the top ten. So just wanted to throw that out there and say thank you.
All right. Any other public comment? All right, I'll close public input and go ahead Supervisor Owen.
Yep, and exactly what has been brought up about the spay and neuter. And I know, I do know that a lot of it comes down to people that have animals that really can't afford. Not only are they backed up at the local vets and they can't get appointment, but also the cost they can't afford. So I think this is one of the reasons it's vitally important that we have, that we are able to increase our salary for a vet and put that in the budget. Because I, I think that that needs to be happening yesterday, not, not next year.
Pays in more ways than one.
Yes, absolutely. So that's it.
All right.
Thank you. And one more, one more thing. I just wanted to let you know that you're very much appreciated. And I wish you good luck.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Yes, good luck with your future endeavors and thank you for everything.
Thank you.
I guess all of the action.
Mr. Chair, if there's nothing further, move to approve budget unit twenty-seven oh three and twenty-seven eleven as presented with consensus to review those additions in our final budget.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
I, yeah, I mean, I, yes, I vote yes. But I, I want to wait until we have a new director in place before we start making these other changes. And hopefully it won't be too long of a wait. But I, you know, I, I don't want to change too much before we have new solid leadership.
So moving forward with adding it into the budget, not moving forward with hiring an officer today.
And for the vet, I think that we need to have that in the budget now.
It is. We're just, we're not talking about, I mean, are we talking about combining those two?
Yes, those two items that were discussed, the, looking to see how we can obtain a vet by changing the vet budget and how we can improve that wage and also looking at the addition of a copter animal control.
And you're saying that to wait on those, but just pass the budget. Is that where we're at?
We get past the buzz, budget as is. But these are changes that I think that we should wait for. We'll probably hopefully have a new director before we have final budget. But I think it's a lot to put on a department that has an interim director right now.
I just wanted clarification. I understood the motion and the vote as approving the budget as presented today with the direction consensus to come back to us with possibilities of how it could be added in before final budget.
Or at, at final budget.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's what I thought too.
Okay.
Okay. So, okay, so we can continue with that motion. All in fa-
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right, thank you.
Nice.
All right, next is Water Resources.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Pawan Upadhyay. I'm the- Good afternoon, Board. My name is Pawan Upadhyay. I'm the Lake County Water Resources Director, and I've been joined by Jacqueline Stors, our accountant, and Alicia Ayala, Deputy Public Works Director. Currently, we share the staff with Public Works, that's why she is here, and they have helped tremendously in developing this budget. So hopefully, together, three of us can answer any questions the board might have. So today, we are representing the budget for the Lake County Water Resources Department and the Lake County Waterset Protection District, which shares the same staff. A brief overview of the programs which the department manages is the lake bed management, which includes overseeing the permitting, leasing, and the lake bed maintenance, which also includes aids to navigation, flood control and levee maintenance, management and oversight of the Middle Creek restoration project, management and oversight of Highland Spring Park and recreational area, invasive species, invasive mussel prevention, which includes Lake County screening inspection and decontamination program for invasive quagga and zebra mussel, and recently, golden mussel is also added to that list, fish habitat protection, groundwater management, watershed management and hydrological studies, and public outreach and education. So with these programs, this program has been supported by nine different business units. So we have 1672, which is the lake bed management. And I already gave a brief overview of what does the lake bed management does. And then we have 1673, which is the lake bed special And then we have four different flood management flood zones, which includes 1674, which is the flood corridor maintenance. And then four different flood zones include flood zone number one, which is around the Adobe Creek and Highland Spring. And then we have flood zone 188104, flood zone number four, that's the Scotch Creek. And then Business Unit, Budget Unit 8105, which is flood zone number five, that's the Kelsey Creek. 81, 8107, which is the Water Resources Administration. Budget Unit 8108, which is June number eight, which is the Upper Middle Creek Basin. And finally, we have the Budget Unit 8109, which is the Budget Unit for the Waterset Protection District, where most of our grants are housed. With that, I think we have received some public comment regarding one of our budget units. So I can address that. And after that, we can address if the board have any questions.
I think we have a question right here first. Go ahead.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I just have a question about the, the lake bed leases and payment plans and how collections are coming along.
Yes. So in total, we have around 1,700 lake bed billable accounts. Out of that, currently, almost, there are 100 accounts which are delinquent, which is about 5.9%. We are working with, out of those, I think one of the delinquent account is the largest one, which holds like majority of the, all the dollar amounts in that. And we are working with them. So compared to last year, it has gone down, like how much is spending.
They're making consistent payments?
I think they have missed the payment, but I think we had another meeting with them, and they are on track right as of now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
All right. Did you have, keep going. You can go ahead and keep going.
Yes, we have like a public comment, I think, which was forwarded to us regarding one of our budget unit, which is 8108, which is the Upper Middle Creek Basin, which is, which we use for the levee maintenance. So there was some question regarding, like, where is the budget, budget for engineering and repair and maintenance for the scouring, which is happening at one of the locations. So in brief, that budget, like the, that project which has been asked, is sits under the 8108, and it's under different heads, which include professional and specialized services, which is for $59,000. And then intra-division services, which is 2391, which is for about $36,000. Special department expenses, 2830, which is 141,000. So that's about $4 million there, and that's the Caltrans grant we have.
All right. Did you have more, or?
No, I think that's the only public comment we received. Yeah.
Did you have more to add to the overall?
No, I think that that's all. That's all our nine business budget units.
All right. Any questions? Supervisor Sabatier?
You were looking at me.
I do.
Just a quick question. The flood zone is a tax that is assessed on the properties that are within the zone itself, that comes to you to be able to provide the services to try and protect that zone as much as possible. And just wondering if there's ever a thought of creating other flood zones, because I know we've been hearing other topics of other flooded areas that occurs often. Has that come about, or no?
No, I think one thing which has came across to us is like forming a different district or like a management unit within the unit which exists, but not like for other areas. But we do have like a project which, depending on like where the flooding happens, like, for example, like the Coal Creek Reis Collaborative, which we are working on currently, it's not like a separate district, because maybe the number of people are fewer, I mean, we won't be able to collect as much in assessment. But mostly, it's funded by the grants. Yeah.
All right, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public. I know that there was, come on up.
Elizabeth Larson with Lake County News. I had a question. So about a month or so ago, there was a survey on a parcel tax sent out for Lake, and I'm curious where that is, where the, the whole, I don't know, the mechanism to study that, where that's in your budget.
So that would be in our Waterset Protection District Budget Unit, which is 8109.
Okay. And are you, are you expecting this coming fiscal year to make a decision about how to move, if you're going to move forward on that?
So I think it would be, yeah, maybe this, so right now, it has gone, gone out for the public opinion.
Right.
Then it will come back to us with a concise results of that. And hopefully, it will goes in November for the election time.
So it would be not, certainly not this year, but like another year or so out.
It would be the next year, if it gets through.
Is your consultant, do you have a consultant now, like tallying the results?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it's just been sent out, so we will be getting in a month or so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right. We have another one.
Julia Carrera, Upper Lake, Third District Supervisor candidate. Hi, Pawan, and staff, thank you for your good report. Question. In the 2021-22 grand jury report, or maybe it's the 2223, it recommends that those flood zone fees be increased to cover costs. And we know that at least the flood zone number eight, which I'm most familiar with, is not currently covering the costs. And I was wondering if this budget includes any kind of increase in those fees, and if not, how would we go about doing that to follow the recommendation of the grand jury? Thank you.
Currently, I think we are not increasing the fees, but I think we should at some point, because we don't collect enough, which is needed for the maintenance, and that's why the, some of the maintenance is behind. But that budget unit also includes like the Caltrans grant. So even though the budget unit might look like larger amount, like half a million dollar, so also, but out of that, just half of it is just a grant, just one single grant, which is for a very specific thing. Right now, I don't think we have that in plans. I don't, do we increase it every year? Yeah, no, I think it's a fixed amount. I think it has to be approved by the board before. But we were considering it at one point, but I'm not sure where that is. Yeah.
All right. No hands in Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Budget Unit 1672, 1673, 1674, 8101, 8104, 8105, 8107, 8108, 8109.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is our UC Cooperative Extension. Matthew Barnes.
Good afternoon, Chair Crandall, Board. Thank you for your time today. My name is Matthew Barnes. I'm the Area and County Director for UC Cooperative Extension, presenting Budget Unit Number 6131 for your consideration. Excuse me. University of California Cooperative Extension is the public outreach arm of the UC Division of Agriculture and Natural Resources. Our academic advisors and specialists develop and extend research-based information in agriculture, natural resources, economic growth, nutrition, and youth development to local agencies, industries, volunteers, and the public through our statewide network of county offices. County funding goes directly to support our administrative staff and agriculture field technician, as well as 50% of our Lake County 4-H representative, and full support for our Master Gardener Program Coordinator. Both of those are represented within the budget, number 2380, professional and specialized services. I have no adjustments to highlight this year, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions? I'll open it up to the public. Anyone on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board.
Just going to say, this is such a, you know, such a great benefit for us to be able to leverage all of the UC staff for work in our county. So it's great. And I will go ahead and move that we approve Budget Unit 6131.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
All right, next is Public Health. We have Director Arden coming up.
And Deputy Director Faraco.
Oh, yeah, Deputy Director Lisa Faraco.
I need notes.
I didn't know she was staying back, or?
All right, testing, testing.
Remember the last time?
All right.
All right. Chair and members of the board, as we enter the upcoming fiscal year, I want to be transparent in saying that we are facing significant financial challenges. Federal administrative changes are already impacting program-level budgets, and broader economic conditions will likely affect California realignment dollars. In addition, the recently approved union contract will result in increased salary costs, although, for the most part, I'm pretty happy with that, because our staff definitely deserve it. But it does have, paint a tougher financial picture. Taken together, these factors place us in a position where the budget is projected to be extremely tight, potentially exceeding our current projected revenue. Because of this, our fiscal staff will have to closely monitor expenditures throughout the year. At the management level, we have already begun taking early actions to reduce pressure on the budget. These include holding or delaying the posting of roles, when appropriate, focusing on mission-critical work, directing managers to be highly conservative with their supply budgets, actively seeking out new grant, grant opportunities, expanding partnerships to share costs when possible, potentially combining programs when opportunities arise, and looking at potentially starting other revenue streams related to services. At this time, our staffing allocations will decrease by three, with two of those positions becoming contract positions compared to prior year. We are prepared to give back a couple more positions if needed, as the fiscal picture becomes more clear, and we have already unfunded a EH supervisor position. We have lost access to spend down money on a couple COVID-related grant funds that we're hope, that we were hoping will help support some staff positions and stand up the wild truck. So we are doing some shuffling with staff assignments to utilize other funding sources and pursuing dollars with Partnership Health Plan to support wild truck operations in the short term. One key area of improvement identified from last year moving into this year is how we manage to draw down our grant funding. To address this, we are bringing in additional fiscal staff and investing in training to ensure accurate time accounting and to shift from realignment to appropriate grants. This effort is being emphasized at all levels, including among our supervisors, and was a priority identified by our new Deputy Director of Finance and our Fiscal Manager. This budget and our strategies reflect our commitment to being fiscally conservative and good stewards of public funds while continuing to deliver vital health services to our community. I'll turn it over to Deputy Director Faraco.
Good afternoon, Board. I'm very nervous during these things, so please give me some grace as I start shaking here. Okay, so I'll give you a brief overview of each budget unit, and then I'll stop and allow you time to ask questions, and then we'll move forward. Okay? So our first budget unit is 2304, which is jail medical. Jail medical services are currently provided through contract with Wellpath, previously known as CFMG, California Forensic Medical Group. Funding is received through Local Community Corrections 8109, a path justice grant through the Sheriff's Department, and the, I believe, the County General Fund is the other. Thank you, Casey. Any questions on jail medical?
No, I just noticed that...
You make it cheaper.
300, like there's been a decrease in 300K in the revenue, so that's what you mean by cuts or, you know, issues.
Yes. Okay, our next budget unit is 4010, Environmental Health. Environmental Health is a regulatory agency whose mission is founded on public health, safety, and sanitation. The primary services are permits and inspections for regulated businesses and land development. Services also include investigations, consultations with individuals and other agencies on health-related issues, emergency response, hazmat, waste management, onsite sewage and water supply wells, those, those sorts of things. Any questions for environmental health?
Continue.
Okay. Next budget unit is 4011, Public Health, and this is what most people think of when they think of the Health Department. We have a number of programs under this budget unit, and I'm not going to list all of them. But primary ones are the AIDS Drug Assistance Program, California Children's Services, the MTU, which is Medical Therapy Unit, lead poisoning prevention, CalFresh Healthy Living, Foster Care, psychotropic medication, monitoring and oversight, community disease investigation and surveillance, and on and on and on. Do you have questions for Budget Unit 4011?
Yes, we have one. Go ahead Supervisor.
Yeah, the, I know it happened last year as well, and it's actually less than last year, but it's such a large increase. The State Admin Program, Other Health, is that with some high hope that that keeps being funded? Or is that a for sure, certain, that that will be funded? 5380 in the revenues. Not to be confused with 8053.
Is that Future Republican?
State Admin Program.
That's the Children's, California Children's Services Medical Therapy Program. So that is funding that comes through DHCS. And I can't speak with a lot of knowledge about what's happened previously there, but funding streams at the state level have been impacted... been impacted by, of course, administrative changes. And then also, funding is based on prior year caseload, and so when we're understaffed and we can't provide services, we can't pull down funding to provide more services because we're understaffed to provide services.
And I appreciate that. And the reason I bring it up is because the only actuals that I have, at least for this specific line item, is 3.3 million in 2324, and it jumps up to 8.8 million. Now, it was brought back down to 7.7, so just kind of figure out, are we being very hopeful when we know it's kind of in a limbo situation? And I, I hope it doesn't make, if something happens, that it doesn't make the rest of your appropriations based on that availability of funding have to go through a wash.
And this is one of the areas where we identified we need to be very careful with pulling down all of the funding that we're expecting to pull down. It is a primary focus of my team as I staff up and we get things back to where they need to be, to make sure that we're pulling down all of the funding that we're anticipating so that we can provide our services and afford our budgeted items.
It's gonna be a rough ride.
Yes, it will.
All right.
Okay. Next is budget unit 4012, which is Health Services Administration. The Health Services Administration Division provides the direction, oversight, accounting, file maintenance, personnel, records, contracts, grants, management, software support, communications for all of the programs within public health, environmental health, veteran services, jail medical, first five, and tobacco education. Do you have any questions about administration?
Continue.
Okay. Budget unit 5321 is Veteran Services. Veterans Services does the preparation and submission of claims like disability, pension, healthcare, education, vocational rehab, home loans, property tax, all of those great things that our veterans earned through service to their country. They do counseling and case management, follow-up on claims, and outreach.
Supervisor Sparty.
Yeah, I have a request for this one. So we had an amazing presentation for Memorial Day, and there was also some comments and requests for funding. And I know that it is not our Veteran Services. It is our volunteer groups that support veterans outside who do the Vet Connects, who do the Stand Downs. We have approximately, at least based on our pick count, a dozen or more vets that are still experiencing homelessness. And I don't want to see those groups fail to be able to continue to provide support to those that we should find ways to support. So I'm hoping that we can look at adding maybe a maximum of $50,000 to Veteran Services Office and doing some kind of a local RFP to see what services do you want to continue and what can we support, just to make sure that those groups don't fall apart and disappear. I think it's important that we have our partners rather than take on things entirely on our own. And I don't know what that looks like, but it's just a suggestion to look at what would be possible and what kind of proposals we receive from the individual groups that we heard from that day.
We're happy to take this to the admin office to discuss how we can bring in revenue into this budget unit and what is allowable, and then how we can provide more services.
My initial question is, where are you thinking the funding would come from?
Yeah, that's my question too.
General fund? Or?
Maybe that's a discretionary fund.
Yeah.
Contribution. I think, you know, we've got two people that are gonna be watching this very closely, especially you, I know. It's gonna be a difficult and tight year, and I, I'm glad that we have both of you at the helm because we're gonna have to, it's gonna be tight. But thank you so much for being so conservative in these budget units. And we will probably be checking in both in September and admin year to see if we're getting out of line in any way.
Yep. We'll be looking at it monthly.
All right. Any other questions before I open it up? That's...
We have one final.
One more, I think it's tobacco, right?
Yeah, budget unit 4016, Tobacco Education. It's state mandated public health program for tobacco education and outreach to the people of Lake County. We've received funding from state tobacco funds, Prop 99 and Prop 56. We have youth and adult coalitions and Health Education Coalition.
Supervisor Sparty.
And just to continue on my comment, this is how it typically works, and so I'm anticipating our fund available balance is gonna go up by the time that we end up with our final budget. And I think $50,000 is not an extreme amount to ask to see what we can do to continue to support those that should be receiving our support.
We'll be happy to meet with the admin office and come up with a strategy to...
If that's the will of the board.
I'm on board.
All right.
Yeah, I'm okay with looking at it once we have the closeout.
All right, so with that, we'll open it up to the public. Does anyone that would come on up?
Elizabeth Larson with Lake County News. I had a question about Wellpath and your jail medical. I know they've been on your closed session agenda, and I'm not trying to weasel in on that stuff, but I do know that about a month ago, they announced they'd come out of Chapter 11, and that they're making noise about that they've got a better, more sustainable business model. So have you had any conversations with them? Are they stable? Are they here for, are they gonna continue to provide healthcare for the jail? Is there any concerns that we might lose that service?
I don't have any concerns about that at this time. We haven't had any conversations with them recently on their finances. We've been very busy with them going through their jail medical inspection and helping them get into compliance.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comment? All right, I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve budget units 2304, 410, 411, 412, 416, and 5321.
Second. I have a motion and a second, and our, we gave direction earlier, right? We don't need to add anything else. All right, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Lisa and Anthony. All right. All right, we will take a five-minute, we'll come back at 3:50, how about that? I always say five minutes, but it ends up being 10, so.
I figured you were, so I didn't have to.
All right, welcome back. We'll move on to our next budget item, and we have Public Services Director Lars Ewing here.
Okay, all right. Well, good afternoon, Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. I'm joined by Katie Galvani, Deputy Director for Finance and Admin, who in large part puts together the budgets. We work hand in hand, but I want to thank her and her, and her staff, Sheila, Anna, Annie, and Dana, as well as admin and the auditor controller teams and your board supervisors for your support. So we will go through this as quickly as possible, giving it due attention, starting with budget unit 1671. And forgive me, I don't have the actual order, so if I'm out of order, please correct me, Casey, but Facilities Maintenance, budget unit 1671, otherwise known as Buildings and Grounds. This covers the maintenance, repair, and minor improvements of all county buildings, and that includes planning, engineering, and construction management of capital projects for those buildings. This is, of note, this is a general fund budget unit, and I think it's important to take a moment to just note a couple things. During opening remarks, now my notes say yesterday because I anticipated to be on tomorrow, but during opening remarks earlier today, the CAO's office summarized the fact that general fund budget units are given a net county cost to work with, and that's basically an allowance. The direction to general fund departments was to submit a balanced budget within that allowance. And as you can imagine, it's not always easy to prepare an operable budget within that allowance, especially with, with overall reductions that we faced this year. For example, this budget unit faced an initial net county cost reduction in excess of $200,000 from the previous year, which is about a 10% reduction. Now, for anything that we cannot fund within the net county cost, a direction to departments, at least to public services, is to put those items on an extraordinary request form. You're probably familiar with that. And while the word is extraordinary, these requests can be for very ordinary items, and they are, they are not shown in the budget, and your board does not see them, at least as far as I'm aware. So, so I think it's important for you to be aware of certainly what is included, but also, and maybe more importantly, what is not included. And related to this is the use of reserve funds. Direction given to departments, again, was to not include the use of any general fund reserves in the budget, but rather during this budget hearings, to ask your board for the use of those reserves. And so, considering that there's a shortfall in the building maintenance operating budget that I will discuss, I do have requests for the use of general building infrastructure reserves. So, so with that said, a quick budget summary. Staffing, staffing is about 1.5 million for Buildings and Grounds. That is up from previous years. The driver for that is the capital projects team, which is reimbursed from other departments for their work on, for project management services, and they're reimbursed from other budget units, specifically the capital project appropriations for those, for those projects. Staffing is about, is 13, and just of note, during the preliminary, or the opening remarks, there was discussion of position reductions. It talked about, I believe, nine, nine county-wide allocations or reductions. And at the request of admin to reduce those, public services, well, we didn't, we didn't reduce an allocation. We downgraded an allocation and reduced the use of extra help staff, so I wanted to make sure that we made note of that. Revenue, revenue is $270,000. That's relatively steady state, and that is primarily for facility leases, telecommunications on the courthouse, and, and also Guard Street. Capital assets, there are none in this budget unit, and that is because capital assets for, for buildings are in other budget units that have either already been addressed or will be shortly. Services and supplies, $900,000. This is the shortfall. We have a $1.2 million calculated need, so we have a $282,000 shortfall here. And so the extraordinary requests that we have is to use $282,000 of general building infrastructure reserves, which is Fund 153. This, this would help sustain ongoing facilities maintenance. As it is now, we are about 80% short in our facilities maintenance object code. We budgeted that at 70,000 to maintain a balanced budget. We set that at 70,000. Our needs are actually 352,000, resulting in that $282,000 need. Also, on the extraordinary request not shown is a replacement pickup for a 20-plus-year-old high mileage needing repairs. So that's, that's another request that you don't see. I will forego going over the overview and objectives. That is in the, in the budget book. Happy to, happy to read that. But just a quick note, a few, few things that you may be aware that we're working on, but maybe not, within, within Buildings and Grounds, specifically capital improvements, is a courthouse campus facilities space planning effort that's underway, and in concert with a few other departments working on the capital improvement plan. So that concludes budget unit 1671. And forgive me, I didn't see if we're, are we pausing at each one or just moving on? Moving on? Okay, thank you.
Continue.
All right. Moving on to solid waste, solid waste management, budget unit 4121. This is the East Lake landfill, which is obviously county-owned, county-operated landfill. It also includes integrated waste management for the entire county, so not just the landfill, but programs and services that support the management of waste countywide. Budget summary, first off, and also, this is an enterprise fund. It is the only enterprise fund, I believe, that the county has. Staffing, staffing is $2.5 million, that's relatively steady state. Within the staffing in the department, it includes all the support staff for all the public services housed in this budget unit. And those other budget units are reimbursed, or I should say, this budget unit is reimbursed through cost allocation to the other budget units in the department. At the landfill, we have 13 permanent staff. And I want to just note that you might, on the allocation list, I believe it shows a difference there. It looks like there's an increase. The driver for that is two term positions that will be reduced upon vacancies of others. So really, there isn't a net increase there. Revenue, revenue is 6.4 million, anticipated revenue, 6.4 million. The bulk of that is landfill disposal fees of about 3.7 million. The remainder come from franchise fees, CalRecycle grants, and other items like interest earned, which is not insignificant, and so I want to thank you to the board, and admin, and treasurer, tax collector, and others involved with that. That is of significance, given the reserves that we have, state mandated reserves that we earn quite a lot of money on now. Services and Supplies, $2.6 million, that is about a 19% increase over last year. Driver for that is just general cost escalations, and additional landfill gas and groundwater monitoring requirements. Also, road repairs to the intersection of Moss and Davis, those are city streets. But we have a cost-sharing agreement with Clearlake, and they've put us on notice that they are doing a road reconstruction project there, so we have a cost-sharing agreement there. Capital assets and projects, two of note, I think there's more than two, but the ones that I wanted to highlight here, landfill expansion, which is a multi-phase project. We have Phase 1, which construction is complete. And the next phase is in design, and we anticipate initial construction starting this fiscal year as well. So that's a $2.5 million appropriation. And then equipment, just of note, $425,000 for an articulated haul truck. And that's just given the nature of the operations, how we are laid out. That piece of equipment will be better serve us than the scrapers and dump trucks that we currently use. In reserves, let's have note to talk about reserves. First, I want to talk about the three reserve funds that we are mandated to have. First is closure and post-closure. We have 13.9 million in that reserve, that's a $400,000 increase. We incrementally deposit into there based on the solid waste, or the municipal waste that we receive at the landfill. Environmental liability stays at 1 million, that's a code requirement. Unanticipated corrective action of $1.2 million, that is a $50,000 increase, similar to closure-post closure, it's a calculated amount that we deposit. The next few are reserves that we set aside for, out of determination that it is a benefit to the county. The first is the expansion reserve, it's really a subset of our operations budget. We presently have 13.4 million there. And as we progress with expansions, that's what we tap into to pay for the design and construction. Next is the aforementioned agreement with the City of Clearlake. We're proposing a decrease of $150,000 to pay for our portion of the road project. And then landfill gas system and water quality improvements, a net decrease of $250,000 to have 500,000 in. There are some water monitoring wells and gas probes that we need to install. And then lastly, equipment reserve, $1.6 million, we have a net $75,000 decrease. We're both depositing some and taking some out to pay for that haul truck. So that concludes solid waste, plenty more that I could talk about, but I will, in the interest of time, I'll move on. Let's see, this next one is out of order. So moving on to Parks, Recs, and Trails, Budget Unit 711. This is for the maintenance, repair, and improvement of all county parks. And it includes planning and engineering and construction management of those, of capital projects for those parks. And this also includes recreation programming and trails. So for a quick budget summary, staffing, $1.4 million, that is an uptick a little bit from last fiscal year. There's a combination of reasons for that, one is the recently approved pay revisions. And then of specific note is a requested position for recreation management. This is anticipated to be 50% funded through recreation-generated revenue, as we have someone who can put their time and energy onto recreation programs, and also recreation events. We anticipate generating some revenue that can offset the cost to this. We are presently, it is presently funded within, or we are, the budget that we presented provides for the $50,000, well, I think that was a separate recreation program funding, but it provides enough funding to pay for that 50% that would need to be offset by the cost, the revenue that that person would generate from all the programs. That doesn't mean that there couldn't be more funding coming in there. So, what I want to indicate is we do need, we do need the position, I certainly feel we do. However, if your board would choose to not fund that position, I would at least ask that the position itself be approved, maybe not the allocation, but it is a new position that your board does need to approve, at least that's my understanding, if we are to hire someone there, even on an extra-help basis. So the request would be to consider the position itself. Moving on to revenue, department-generated revenue is a little over $4 million. The driver for that is this year Park Improvement Grants, we have a few, and telecommunication leases on Mount Canocti. Not included in that 4.1 million, but I want to point out is TOT and geothermal, which are put into the parks budget. Services and Supplies, 1 million, that's a relatively steady state for ongoing operations and maintenance. Capital projects and assets, so this budget unit, different from Facilities Maintenance, it does have capital projects in, as a standalone item. So there's a few things to highlight there, one is a mower, another one is $250,000 for work for the Cobb Area Community Park System. Right now, we're in the planning, well, and really the design phase. Lakeside Park has a grant from the state for ongoing construction. We anticipate 145,000 being spent out of that. Also, there is Clean California Parks Beautification Grant Closeout. That was a $1.3 million grant, we have about $32,000 remaining there. And the last item that I want to talk about, which is a segue into extraordinary requests, is Hammond Park. There's a Hammond Park Improvements Grant that we received from the state. The grant was $2.3 million. We put the project out to bid, just within the last few weeks, and received bids. Low bid was a little over the estimated amount, and so the shortfall is about $300,000. So where we are now is that we have grant funding of 2.3 million. We have about a couple hundred thousand dollars that we are using out of Quimby, primarily for the Collier Avenue development that had Quimby fees that were paid there. But we are short $300,000, so the suggestion, the recommendation from me is to use the Parks Reserve Fund. So, referencing back to what I discussed earlier, that you didn't see in the budget any recommendation to tap into the reserve funds, but it was always my intent. In fact, our budget, our initial budget submission included recommendations to use reserve funds, for example, in this case, parks. So you don't see it there, but I'm coming to you now with a few requests. The first is $300,000 out of the Parks Reserve Fund to pay for, or help pay for Hammond Park Improvements. The next two, or I'll go one at a time, recommending a million dollars to be provided for the Burns Valley Sports Complex Regional Recreation Center. And I'll come back to this, another is $1 million for the Westside Park Regional Pool, also out of the reserve fund. Lastly, out of the Parks Reserve Fund, a recommendation of $100,000 for an enclosure at the Middletown Pool, to work towards, for the planning and design phases for that. The last two requests, not suggesting to come out of the Parks Reserve Fund. Nice Clubhouse is across from Keeling Park, requesting $200,000 to renovate that facility for use as a community center. And lastly, $50,000, again, not out of the Parks Reserve Fund, but this is an extraordinary request. $50,000 for Lucerne Community Garden Park Master Planning and Shoreline Improvements. So, coming back to the requests out of the Park Reserve Fund, in particular, the $2 million requests, the idea there is, as your board is aware, we have the Lake Recreation Joint Powers Authority, that your body is a part of. And the board previously established a Parks Reserve Fund of $3 million with largely the intent of significant regional recreation facilities. And given the work that has been done up to this point, advancing those projects, I think is in the benefit of the community, the county at large. So that would be my recommendation to partner with each of those individual cities to help advance those projects and work toward completion. Moving on.
Real quick, real quick, yeah, Supervisor Sabatia, Supervisor Owen, and then Supervisor Pasko.
You just said millions. So, a couple of things, I have, I guess, I'm kind of in the same boat as some of these others, where I think review, saying yes, if, and waiting for the fund available balance for what the true end balance looks like at the end of the year, I think it gets you the other 50,000 for that program coordinator. Not sure if you've had discussions with the schools. I know that when you do like after-school stuff, they have stipends available to help pay for those things through the state funds that they receive for after-school extracurricular stuff. Wondering if they have similar dollars available, where it could be a partnership between the school districts that you're doing the program in. And maybe that's how we look at getting it involved in multiple districts, rather than, unfortunately, it's difficult to do more than one program. But if we can get the school districts to pitch in and help out, because it helps their students to do something positive during the summertime, that maybe that would be an opportunity. And so, I would like to follow through with that, and I think that, again, finding $50,000 at the end of the year, especially since I anticipate that the end fund balance availability is going to grow, as it usually does, that we will be able to find that, so that we can have those opportunities for our youth to make sure that they're engaged and not just sitting idly or just doing their own thing. In support of, that was what the park reserves was for. I don't know where the 300,000 should come from, but it definitely should come from somewhere, because nothing should stop the fact that we got a grant and it's ready to go. So, I don't know what to say on that one, other than we just need to find something to make sure that that gets completed. And I think those are all the things you asked for. But I appreciate, oh no, you said Nice, I don't know about the Nice thing. I'll wait for someone else to speak on that, just because that adds a little complexity to the rest, and I don't know how much money is left over at the end of that.
Okay, yeah, to answer the question about the schools, I did recently attend superintendent, school superintendents meeting, specifically for recreation programming. While the cost, it really was about cost sharing for summer programs. There wasn't a definitive yes, there was a lot of maybes, and great, let's keep the conversation going. I didn't come out of there with any definitive answer, nor certainly any definitive education on the school funding and how it could be used. But there was certainly interest in getting recreation programming increased, that was, it's hard to say no to that. At least have an opinion against that.
Supervisor Owen, did you have something else?
Can you, I heard you mention in the Middletown Pool, but I didn't catch exactly what you'd said about that.
Yeah, so, Middletown Pool, county-owned, county-owned pool in Middletown, adjacent to the.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
And that's just for the general public, so they're aware of where it is. $100,000 for planning and design, initial planning and initial design for an enclosure. Right now, it's open, what, Memorial Day to Labor Day, give or take, so very limited. The intent with an enclosure would be to work towards a year-round program.
Okay.
Amazing, and then I did have another question, but move on, and then I'll come back. Yeah, I do want to talk about the recreation programming, I brought it up earlier, as ongoing, but I want to talk about first the requests on the reserve, which although it is a part, we set it aside for parks, it is still a general fund reserve. And I do feel uncomfortable right now spending, or speaking for that money right now. And for the JPA, I think before we have a conversation about that, we need to report back, and Supervisor Owen and I are on that. Before that, it was Chair Crandall. And there's not a clear direction with that group right now. And so, I'm really hesitant to put any, allocate anything towards those until we have a clear direction. We did some strategic planning, we have another follow-up meeting to that. My suggestion was we, there's some issues with that, because we have turnover with the cities. And now we have some turnover with the new supervisor, so it's been a different group that sort of changes each year. And the focus has been on a tax measure, which I don't agree with. And I'm not going to speak for the other colleagues that have been on that board, but without a tax measure, those, these projects don't go forward. So I have been very honest and open about that with the group. So, you know, not to get too far into the weeds, we've done a strategic planning session, there's going to be a follow-up meeting in July. And I have suggested that we each go, after we've come together, after these planning sessions, we go back to our boards and report out, because we haven't done that. And these JPAs have been meeting for several, or this JPA has been meeting for several years. And there are some things, that ideas, different threads are out there, that I feel like we need to get clear direction from our respective boards. So I don't think that we should be allocating anything to those projects yet, until we have a clearer path forward. And I don't know that that will come anytime soon, to be very honest. I don't, what, the 300,000 for Hammond Park, and you said that there's a grant, and we're on a time schedule, and is there a time crunch for this? And what, you know, is this a project that can be phased? I just don't know anything about it.
Well, we have a 2.3 million dollars from the State Way Park Improvement Program. SB, Prop 68, SB, Prop 68. And so, we have that funding. Again, Quimby for Collier, with the intent there was, you can throw a stone, probably, from Collier Avenue to Hammond, so it certainly fits. The estimate for the project was 2.7, we have 2.7 million dollar, or had last year, 2.7 million dollars with the intent of funding construction. We put it out to bid, low bid was, you know, we estimated 2.7 million, it was just a little under $3 million. So, we are, right now, we're short $300,000.
10%.
10%, less than 10%, or actually, a little bit more than 10%, but yes.
Okay, that seems reasonable to me. And then for the Middletown Pool enclosure, I think it's, you know, it's an interesting idea we've been talking about for a long time, again with the JPA. But, you know, maybe something to consider in the meantime, because I'm concerned about how many, we invest all this money in this enclosure, is it going to be used by the community in the wintertime? And maybe something that we could do is think about having it be a three-season pool for a couple of years and heat it, so that it's available in spring, summer, and fall. Because a lot of people use pools in that, you know, like, if it opened in March and closed in November, because it's still really hot in Middletown in that time. And then we're not putting out so much capital, but we're seeing if the public uses it during that time, because it's heated. And I don't know what the cost of that would be, but it might be something to consider as like a figuring out if we should go down that route of a major investment of an enclosure.
Yep, and just in response, I don't have a cost estimate for heating of the pool, but if we, I would hazard a guess that it's probably about that 100 grand. I mean, I, you know, not that the heater would be, I haven't done any research, so I shouldn't be up here with a microphone telling you costs. But we might be able to change this from Middletown Pool enclosure to, you know, to Middletown Pool Extended Season Improvements, I don't know. So whether that's an enclosure or heating, we start with a feasibility study, just at. I don't know. So, whether that's an enclosure or heating, we start with a feasibility study, just a simple one. I'm not talking about hiring a consultant to do this. We just look at what are the possibilities in-house and go from there. So, regardless, all of these things that were on here were asks that, again, weren't in the budget. So, there, I realize that I'm dropping bombs when we're trying to go quickly. And, but I think it's important that your board be aware of the requests, even if it's not fully developed.
Okay. And then, can you talk about the recreation programming? Because you've got this new position that you want funded, and we've had a lot of conversations about potential programming and what you have in mind for this summer and going forward, and what that position would mean to our communities.
Yeah, what I, I think what I'll talk about is what we have done thus far without a recreation programmer. And that's just all this, not all the staff, but a lot of staff in public services coming together to make it work. We have, we're in year two of a three-day summer camp. That's in grand, in overall terms, that's not much, but it was getting something. This year, we, last year was at Lakeside Park. This year, in consideration of Cabot and Park being open, we're hosting it there, partnering with the city for the use of the facility, as well as their staff. But this year, what is new, we have two sports camps, multi-week sports camp, well, each camp is a week long, but they're doing multiple sessions. Sign-ups are out now, looking for people to sign up for those. There's two service providers, based on what, where they were interested in putting the camps on. They requested for, they requested the cities, based on them coming from out of the area. And specifically, they requested schools, because that was, that's where people are used to. So, for Lakeport, we partnered with the Lakeport School District, and so, having sports camps there. And then for the Clear Lake, because the Conacti Unified School District has a lot of construction, Becky Salado suggested, you know, not at their schools. So, we, we're doing it at Austin Park, actually, right next door, Burns Valley Elementary is where we'll sign up or show up, and then use Austin Park there. So, those are dependent upon sign-ups. So far, you know, we need help getting the word out. We may have to cancel as we, you know, as there's no sign-ups. But I think when we get the word out, that's going to happen. Another thing's going on are swim lessons. We have swim lessons that are out now. In fact, I think the sign-ups just started this past weekend. At Middletown Pool, we have two separate weeks of two sessions each. So, that's with, that's with county staff, extra help lifeguards, who are going to be putting that on. The next event that I'm working on, kind of through the Lake Rec JPA, in partnership with Don Smith, Wellness Director at Adventist Health, is a, basically climb Mount Conacti, hike or run Mount Conacti, you know, not a short of summit, but a king of the mountain sort of run. So, you know, you have five Ks, ten Ks that are on flat ground. Well, there's some people that want to run up a mountain, so, you know, let's let them. So, an event there. So, that's just a little sneak peek of what we've, what we're working on. And with a recreation programmer, I don't have, I don't have a game plan of what they would do. I have ideas, certainly, but it is not defined. But I can promise that if we did have someone, it would be what we just described and a lot more.
And year-round programming?
Year-round programming.
Yeah, I think this is great. We went from clogging to now swim lessons, and summer camps and sports camps. So, this is an amazing trajectory. I think our community is really hungry for these services and need these services. I'm obviously in favor of investing more here. But I am hesitant to get too far into the reserves right now, given our climate, given our economy. I always like to hold on to reserves for these times when we just don't know if we're going to need them. But it does sound like the three hundred thousand dollars for Hammond Park is appropriate, because we don't want to uphold or hold up a three-million-dollar project. I don't know if you need the okay now, or if this can wait until final budget. I don't, what's the timeline for that?
Preferably, preferably now, but not because of any funding deadline, but because we have open bids, and we're waiting on moving from there. So, bids can stagnate. They don't know what our contract or what their bids indicated for how long they're going to be held to that bid. But the longer we wait, I've never really seen any quarter projection with construction costs where it goes down. So, yeah, I would highly suggest that we move now, and I know that that's not easy. It wasn't easy for me to come here with a project that we've been planning for quite some time, and here it is, final, or preliminary budgets, and I need to ask for additional funding. But having just opened the bids, that's the reason.
Okay. Do you guys know where I stand?
Vice Chair.
Yeah, I've got several questions on parks, and if it's okay, I'll go back to buildings.
Did he, were you going to go now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Him, then you, then.
Okay.
So, my understanding is the program coordinator for REC, that's already written into the budget. So, if we approve it as is, you can go forward.
Yeah, and I appreciate you saying that. I meant to clarify that. That's true, yes.
The, as far as the, I'm a hundred percent in favor of the three hundred thousand out of the Parks Reserve for Hammond Park, right away to get that going. Regarding the million for each city, while I'm a hundred percent in favor of getting these major projects done for the community, I wouldn't be comfortable okaying that today, because I don't know enough about. You know, I'm not involved in the REC Authority. I don't know what's going on there. I'd also like to hear more from the cities about, you know, for example, the West Side Pool, a million dollars is a small amount in what it's going to cost, so I'd like to have more info. Not against, I definitely want to hear more, but I wouldn't be ready to go there today. Let me see, I think, and then on the, the Keys Park, Lucerne Park, I'd want to see where we're at with the closeout, I guess, because you didn't have a proposal where to get that money right now.
Are we talking about the Nice Clubhouse?
Yeah, you said not out of the Parks Reserve.
Well, considering that the Parks Reserve was intended, my understanding of it was for significant regional recreation facilities or programs. You know, I don't know that the clubhouse fits that. So, this was more of a, I'm going to use wrong terms here, but is there fund balance carryover? Is there one-time funding available for that? That's, you know, we couldn't fit this, we couldn't put this in our budget. We just, we could not. So, that's a one-time request. It's an existing building. There's history there with, I think it used to be Lions Club. There's a lot of things that it used to be. But it's county-owned. It's tied in property-wise with the park, the park property, and would be a good little community building, I believe. There's been, this has come up a few times to me, I believe, to Supervisor Crandall as well. So, thought that it would be a good opportunity.
Yeah, and so, that's how I would want to look at what we have maybe left, if we're needing another funding source when we close out. And then, going back to, my understanding is we have eight, almost eight and a half million in building infrastructure reserves?
I believe that's right, yeah.
I believe it's just under eight and a half, eight-point-four-eight million. But that being the case, I'd be okay with the, you know, the two-eighty-two coming out of there myself. And then, but I got behind on the vehicle. Was that proposed to pay out of that same reserve?
No, no, that was just an extraordinary request. It's not in the budget. Just wanted you to be aware of items that we couldn't fund with our budget. And while, you know, the term extraordinary, sometimes they are extraordinary, sometimes they're just ordinary, and we couldn't, we couldn't put them in the budget.
Okay, then I would place that one in the same category I've got with the unknown funding source that we have to look at after things are closed out. That's where I sit.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so, I can definitely stand behind the funding, the three hundred thousand for the Herman Park. That sounds like a no-brainer to me. Also, the hundred thousand is pretty minimal to be able to cover the Middletown Pool, so that it could be used year-round, and with its proximity to the high school and the schools, I think that that could be made of good use year-round. And I know if it's not covered and just heated, we do get some winds. And it's still going to be miserable if it's not, if it's not enclosed. So, I would support that. As far as the million dollar, there was two, I believe, million dollars for the Burns Valley West Side Pool projects. I do agree with Jessica on that. It's not even as much on the cost of putting it in as it is keeping it going. And that's what we have not worked through in our parks. So, I just don't see how we're going to fund that at this moment, and therefore, I don't feel that it's responsible for us to do it right now. It's not that it's not a great program. It's an amazing program. It's just we're the money. So, being responsible here, I don't see that we can do that. Let me see. The director for the recreation program, that's pretty exciting, and that's something. The Middletown Pool, where you said that you're offering swim lessons now, you know, I used to give swim lessons there. I was a, and so, having the water safety instructor programs there, because at that time, I had to come to Lakeport to get certified for the water safety instructor, or my lifeguard, one of those. So, it's nice to have that there, where we can certify lifeguards and be able to do that during the winter as well, because that's when we were able to do it. Actually, Bob Brumfeld was my instructor. So, it's pretty cool. I think that that could really serve the community in other areas as well. And with your program director, that's really exciting. And one of the things that I think that we could kind of capitalize on would be something with your programs, would be bringing more tourism to the area with triathlons or something along those lines would be exciting. So, nope, who knows? Thank you.
Thank you. Just.
Go ahead.
Okay, it's just for some clarity, not to take action here. I don't, I'll defer to you, but it sounds like there's consideration for Hammond Park, the three hundred thousand out of Parks Reserve, and something for Middletown Pool for a hundred thousand, but I want to make sure that, you know, since it's not everybody.
What happened, sir? Anything? I'm waiting for Supervisor Sabatier to go next.
Looking for some direction.
Leave it to Don Smith to want to take a whole bunch of people to run up the mountain.
I'll join him, I will.
I'll watch from afar. I appreciate the conversation here. I am absolutely open for further information before doing, taking any action. So, that's my two cents on that. I am going to probably receive a whole lot of text messages and phone calls, but while I appreciate you bringing Parks and REC to the city of Clear Lake, the city of Clear Lake has its own Parks and REC department, and Charlotte White is doing a fabulous job of providing extracurricular activities. I would like to see the focus on the rest of the county. I'm kind of conveying something I already heard earlier. I just think that it's, no one else is going to do it in the county. The city's not going to go outside of the county and provide those types of things. And there's some from Clear Lake Oaks and Lower Lake that will access them, because they're part of the Conacti Unified School District. So, I would like to see our Parks and REC really focus, if we're going to do a program, a place where there is no program at this moment in time. So, please don't stop what you're doing now, but in the future, that's my personal opinion. I think the city, just like you did one in Hobbiton Park, I think the city of Lakeport should be doing that program. And we should be really focused on the needs of the unincorporated folks that really don't have easy access to those things. I am hesitant, I want to support the program director, but I'm hesitant for year-round, just because there's so many activities that happen once school starts, versus the summertime is really the big issue and the big time sink. So, I just wanted to at least give my opinion on that. I don't think it's a no. I don't think it's a yes, but it's just, there's so many other activities that start once school is in session, whether it's school-related or other sports activities and other things, that I don't know if the need is as big as when there's that gap right in summer, where there's really nothing that happens. So, just.
You've got to plan.
Exactly, yeah, that's what I was going to say. Yeah, that's the time when maybe school is in session is when there's a lot of planning for those summer programs, or for that matter, for, you know, the shoulder months of, you know, five K, maybe you don't want to do it right in the heart of summer, right? You know, that might be in the fall or spring, and so, having some planning in those off months, that's a good time to get it done.
Maybe part-time during off months.
Well, my, again, the argument against part-time is that, I mean, I would suggest that having it year-round, having it permanent is a huge benefit to the county. Can we, if I had an extra help recreation program manager, would we do it? Absolutely. It's more about, okay, what isn't being done in those, you know, sixteen hours that we aren't getting in a week? Just throwing that out there.
Anything else? All right. Looks like there's a consensus for the full-time.
Okay, and we have, there's other budget units that I need to address here.
That you still need to, yeah, we stopped right here.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I just wanted to comment on the Nice Clubhouse, because I know it was brought up. It was previously on an improvement list, or it was put in a place to be worked on or looked at. But we moved the funds to the Lucerne Harbor. That was when I first got on back in twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty-ish. So, speaking of planning for some of these events, that would be a good place. It's also a place that Nice would have, because it doesn't really have too much, except for those two parks, right? So, I know that that would, I would really like that, but I mean, and with the will of everyone else here. And then, yeah, I mean, I agree with my colleagues on the million. I get it, yeah. I won't belabor that discussion, but I'm good with that, so. Yeah, you can continue on if there's not anything else, because I know you've got a lot left.
Did you need to clarify what we're?
Perhaps we can clarify at the end.
Yes.
Okay, so the next budget unit, seven-oh-seven-three, which is Quimby Parks Improvement. These are funds placed in reserves to be appropriated in the future for park improvements, when there's a subdivision that triggers the requirement to pay Quimby fees. We presently have two-hundred-sixty thousand dollars in reserve. We're estimating about seven thousand to come in revenue. That is the equivalent of two subdivisions at a certain amount per parcel, plus interest and others. So, we are planning to use, as I mentioned, funding for, from Collier Avenue for the Hammond Park project. The next budget unit, seven-oh-seven-four, John T. Klaus Park. This is a singular park, and it's a standalone fund that is required by the John T. Klaus Trust, that, where the, how the county received this. From a funding perspective, we started fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five with about three-point-six million. Our spend plan for this coming year is two-hundred-forty-three thousand dollars. That's seventy-one thousand dollars in staff, all entirely extra help, and then a hundred-and-sixty-three thousand for services and supplies. Part of that includes technical studies for, to advance the project. We have done our, the master plan, concept master plan, and we're going to take the next step to do technical studies so that we can evaluate the impacts of the project, and then some fixed assets that are in there as well. So, that wraps up the three budget units related to parks. And we have two in museums to address, two budget units in museums. Budget unit seventy-two-oh-one is the overall museum operations budget. There are three county museums. This funds the operations for three county museums. One in, here in Lakeport, Courthouse Museum, Schoolhouse Museum in Lower Lake, and Gibson Museum in Middletown. Staffing is three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars. This is a reduction because of the reduction in the net county cost. We have one, it funds one permanent curator, one permanent assistant curator, and historically, it has funded a good amount of extra help. We were reducing, we have to reduce the extra help from nine to eight. And the loss, right now, we're looking at likely to be at Gibson, based on operations there. That's to be determined. Services and supplies, we have a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollar budget for there. That's, that also has a hundred thousand dollars coming in from Marketing and Economic Development Budget Unit, eighteen-ninety-two. Without that, this budget unit would be, I mean, it's already a shoestring, and it would just, we wouldn't be able to operate. We're also bringing in ten thousand dollars from the Museum Improvement Fund, which is the next budget unit I'll talk about. To talk a little bit about the reductions that we're proposing in this budget, because of the net county cost reduction, we're cutting in half the marketing and advertising budget from thirty thousand to fifteen thousand. Inventory is slashed to zero from twenty thousand. And exhibit preservation and collections care is cut in a little bit less than half, from thirty, seventy-six thousand to thirty-nine thousand. Capital, on the capital side, the project is, it includes right now, the capital budget includes ninety-four thousand dollars for the Pomoe Family Sculpture. We just presented to your board an update on that project, so I won't go into that. But on the extraordinary requests, we do have some extraordinary requests to make up for the shortfall that we have. I won't go into detail there, just in the interest of time, but I will highlight the fact that there is a, there is one. But I will highlight the fact that there is a, there is one, well, two very extraordinary requests on there in the millions of dollars. And that is for seismic and historic restoration of both, both the Courthouse Museum and the Schoolhouse Museum. We have, we have a lot of data about the, the needs there. Both, both facilities are in need of some, some historic restoration here in, in Lakeport specifically and, and Lower Lake. But Lower Lake specifically also has seismic needs. So those don't come with, with a minimal cost. So wanted to make sure that your board is aware of that, of that need. Lastly, the last budget unit here is, is Budget Unit 7202, the Museum Improvement Fund. This is a repository for donations that are received. We're proposing pulling funds out of this reserve fund or out of the available reserves to help pay for exhibit improvements and collections care in consideration of the shortfall in the operations budget. And there, in the reserve is also funding for the, the family Pomo sculpture. So that helps, we will be paying directly out of this budget unit. We have the, the artist costs and then we have the base and we have an interpretive panel and there's some other costs associated with it. Project is fully funded. This is just a, a place where it will be paid out of. So that concludes all the budget units.
So can I open it up to the public first?
Sure.
Because we'll, we'll spin off into 5:30 if I open this up again to us. Please come on up.
Elizabeth Larson, Lake County News. So I couldn't quite find it in the budget book. So the extraordinary request for the seismic, is that then you're asking to go ahead and try to do that in the coming budget, the coming fiscal year?
The reason for bringing it up is just to make the board aware that it's not in the budget. It's, it's a need. And we've, you know, we're certainly looking for grants, looking for, for funding opportunities for it. But, you know, we're looking at about, I think it's about $5 million for the combination of both of those. So it's, it's not an, not an easy, not an easy find for the, for the funding nor is it an easy fix construction-wise.
Right. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board. Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you for, and actually, Ms. Larson actually just kind of asked exactly what I was going to ask as if that was coming forward in the budget. So, but I wanted to thank you for putting that out there and letting us know that that hasn't been forgotten because I know that that's, those projects are really important, important to the community and important to our history. So looking for some grants and looking for some funding and whatever else needs to be done to start getting those on the agenda and moving them forward is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Mr. Russ Kramer never lets me forget that there's a need for retrofit of that schoolhouse. I, I'm hopeful that within the Heritage Commission and identifying that building in a special way, whatever that way needs to be, historical landmark, historical building, would allow us to access grants that we don't have. I'm not sure, but that's, that's what I'm hoping can be the, the game plan is to get that accomplished first and see what that opens us up for. I know that's being worked on. Slowly but surely, things are evolving there. And I would like to wait just to make sure we position ourselves for those funds. I don't know if we're planning to get more community projects from the federal government. Doubt it, but that would be a possibility as well. I know Thompson has talked before in the past of helping support that kind of project. And so I'm, that number at this moment in time is too big for me to say, we got it, let's do it. But definitely want to keep that as a lasting fixture in our community. I think those types of things should be taken care of and not neglected.
And just to note that, I think it's important to note that those, those projects, I believe both of them, but at least the Lower Lake Schoolhouse has been submitted as a community project funding request, at least to, at the county level to then prioritize for submittals. So I don't believe it's ever gone forward, but it, but it's been submitted from the public services side of, of the house.
Has it been put on the list for, designated as a historical site?
I think that's what Supervisor Sabatier was getting at.
He just did. I'm just wondering if we're in that process now.
Yes, I'll say hesitant yes because I'm not prepared. I don't know the definitive answer, but from, from the, a former museum curator had, had some suggestions that if we did A, B, and C, then it, then it would qualify us for that. I just, I'm not, unfortunately, I apologize, I'm not prepared to say what the A, B, and C is. But it's essentially the, you know, that idea of historic property establishment on, on a registered list.
Thank you.
All right. I think we should probably go down and figure out which ones of the asks that you're, that you're going through. And you want to just start with the main one and then we'll go down.
Okay, great. So the ask in Budget Unit 1671 is to use $282,000 or a transfer, I think, $282,000 from the Building Infrastructure Reserve into Budget Unit 1671.
What were those projects again?
There's no, there's no projects. This is just ongoing maintenance. It's, yeah, it's Object Code 18, building maintenance. That's where we're, we have a shortfall.
I think I'm, I'm good with that. I think we're all, you good with it?
And.
About four, so.
Okay. Parks in Budget Unit 711, the request is to use the General Parks Capital Reserve Fund, Fund 152, $300,000 for Hammond Park Improvement Project and $100,000 for a Middletown, Middletown Pool heating and/or enclosure project.
First one, yes. Second one, need more info.
I'm on the first one, yes.
I'm on both.
You have to have consensus. Do one at a time.
Do one at a time, okay. $300,000 from the General Parks Capital Reserve Fund, which is Fund 152, for the Hammond Park Improvements Project.
Yes.
Okay. And $100,000 from the General Parks Reserve Fund to fund a Middletown Pool heating and/or enclosure study.
Study?
No, not study, project.
Project.
All right, I'll do that.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Great. I believe that was it.
Okay. And that's, then what about the other ones are like the, those were?
The, the others were, were not, yeah, we, I think we addressed the.
There was nothing identified for funding for those.
Oh, okay. Those were just mentioned, right?
They, they were mentioned exactly, not, but not, not recommended from my, from my perspective to come out of the parks reserve fund.
Okay, good. All right. I didn't know if I had to like talk more about the clubhouse.
Sell it?
Yeah. That's, it's all good. We're good, I think.
I think that, that is all that I had as far as changes to the budget.
All right. So I think we're good with, we just need action now.
Mr. Chair, move to approve 16, Budget Unit 1671 for 121, 07011, 7073, 7074, 7201 and 7202 with the amendments that we just provided.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much, Lars.
Mr. Lars, I, I do want to clarify on the Middletown Pool. We had talked about, I think it was brought up as a cover, but now the way it was presented was cover or heat. And I just want to clarify that it's cover.
Well, it would be, you, you mentioned, I think there's some validity in looking into what we could do if there was a, if there was heating for the pool. You know, we could do a, you know, say three months, or excuse me, three seasons out of, out of the year.
So are you, is that going to come back to us, which direction?
Absolutely. I wouldn't.
Okay, that's what I was giving you.
You're going to have to heat the water anyway.
Yeah, you know what? When I was there, that we had heating. It was, we had the solar heating on top of the, that, the pump house.
And there's, there's, there's an ongoing cost to that for sure. So we would need to evaluate that.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, let's talk more about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. You were going to say something, CAO, what's that?
Yes, I wanted to remind your board that we have a hard stop at 5 o'clock.
And so do you think that we'll have enough time to do the next one or should we just stop now?
Alicia? 15 minutes?
I, I don't, I, I don't trust it.
Not, not.
Public works that involve streets and discussion.
I believe roads needs more time.
It does. I don't want to rush you.
I'm sorry, Alicia. We'll see you first thing in the morning. Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lars.
With that, we will.
Adjourn?
Adjourn. I didn't know if it was a recess or adjourn.
Adjourned.
Oh, wait, recess. I apologize.
That's what I thought. See, Lloyd, I know. We will recess until tomorrow, 9:00 a.m. to continue on with public works. See you tomorrow.
Believe it or not, you are the veteran of the group.